Okay, good evening and welcome to the regular August meeting of the Fairfax Town Council. Come on in and please take a seat. Let's start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands is one nation and not individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call will show that all the council members are here. Can I have an approval of the agenda and the affidavit of posting?
Second.
Okay, Bragman and John Reed. Announcement of closed session. We took up a number of matters that are on the agenda. We gave direction to staff and took no action. Meeting protocol on the agenda as always, the announcements of the Town Council workshop, very important regarding the Tenolima and School Street Plaza set for Wednesday, the 17th of September, right here in the Women's Club. That's the first forum that we're picking up since the one we had just a few days ago. The art show coming up, the Artist in Residence, Matt Tasly and Friends, August 22nd, 7 to 10, on a Friday, in the Fairfax Pavilion, hopefully a nice follow-up to the one that he showed just a few days ago. The Fairfax Food Pantry, of course, Saturday is 9 to 1, Fairfax Community Church on Drake, volunteers always needed. A vacancy on the park, as well as the volunteer board. We have applications to Town Hall, as well as on the website. And, as you saw today, the Fairfax Farmer's Market every Wednesday, I believe until October 1st, at Bolinas Park, 4 to 8 o'clock. Renee, you want to talk about Streets for People?
Yeah, I would like to welcome you all and invite you all to come on down to the Streets for People event. This is the third annual event where we will be closing Bolinas Road between Broadway and Elsie Lane on Sunday, August 31st. It's Labor Day weekend, it's a great reason to stay in town, from 11 to 4. The activities this year include kids biking activities, we're adding a clothing swap to the event, we'll have street art. This is everything that celebrates what Fairfax is. It's not a festival, or a fair, or a drinking event. This is a Fairfax family, come on down and celebrate our community. So, please make sure to attend Streets for People. We'll look forward to seeing you all.
Thank you. And Barbara, Sky Ranch.
Yeah, just an update on Sky Ranch. So, most of you know that the Town of Fairfax, the Town of San Anselmo, and the Marin Open Space Trust is trying to purchase Sky Ranch for open space for the county, for us, for all of us to enjoy. And the most recent update on fundraising I saw is that we're about 150,000 short of our goal of 1.2 million. The funding has to be secured by mid-August so that the purchase can happen, thanks to all of you who contributed today and have gone to fundraisers or just contributed online. So, cross your fingers and keep contributing. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, if there are no other announcements, we'll move right into open time for public expression. If it's not on the agenda, please come on up and share your thoughts for three minutes.
Valerie Hood, 79 Domingo, Fairfax. I want to address something I think is really important. I feel that the council atmosphere has deteriorated in the past several months in a manner that disenfranchises the public. Fairfax is known for free speech and independent thinking, but the current atmosphere at these meetings is one of arrogance, disrespect, and cultivated contempt for speakers, not by the majority, but by the minority. Community members are now often interrupted during open time, and the mayor gets into topics which are not even agendized. When Fairfax residents or visitors are giving testimony, they are also interrupted, which is intimidating for many and often throws people off their thought process. You can see this on any archived council proceeding over the past year. Even other council members are being interrupted with inappropriate statements like "wrap it up," and when it's often the first thought they have shared in the evening. The mayor does not call on other council members to share their own opinions, but constantly launches into what can only be called self-congratulatory diatribes. The mayorship appears to be being used as a bully pulpit to push through a minority agenda rather than coming to decisions based on consensus. A feeling shared by many is that we are losing our local democracy here in Fairfax. There have been now 10 closed-door meetings recently, and more than I have ever seen in the nearly 30 years I've been coming to council meetings. As far as I know, these are all through quest of the mayor who agendizes items. Also, as was discussed and I thought agreed upon, people are not being reminded on a consistent basis that they may share their names and addresses, lending a very different atmosphere to what we enjoyed previously. Finally, staff now seems to be on a totally different wavelength than I experienced even a year ago. Instead of employees being directed, it now feels that our town is being inappropriately directed by them and the minority on the council. In conclusion, as Fairfax citizens, we've had three choices to express ourselves, via the initiative, referendum, and recall. We've tried referendum, and it doesn't leave us with very many options. Thank you.
John?
John Sargent, I'm a resident of Fairfax. Well, that's a nice start, you know? I understand that there may be some improvements in the future where that fan -- it may be running backwards, but again, it's a nice start, so thank you. David, I think you and I were in agreement that in prior council meetings to try to put human-being language into things that are on the agenda, for example, item number 11. Rather than the kind of language I see here, I thought we had agreement, we were just going to look into perhaps simplifying that and putting it in human-being language so that people would have an understanding of what that really means. So, I'd like your comments on that, please.
Now, let me ask either the manager or town attorney, what are the restrictions on us, at least in the agenda of -- I think he's got a point, you read that, it might as well be in Sanskrit. What's the ability to write it in plainer English?
Obviously, the town attorney can elaborate on this, but really statutorily, we are required to put down what the actual ordinance says, and so we're somewhat limited in what we can actually say, because we have to be careful what we think people think is important. If we don't include the right language, then it could be indicated that we didn't notice it properly. That being said, we do try to go ahead and simplify it whenever we can. In this case, if you'll notice, and perhaps it didn't work, is a notice, the ordinance to repeal is actually fairly short. It just says ordinance number 780, ordinance to repeal, ordinance 778. And then we put what ordinance 778 actually said, so that people would know what the heck ordinance 778 was. But, that being said, I understand it's confusing, we'll try different ways to try to get across the subject in the future.
Well, I just have one brief comment, because my time has been used up, but I would hope you'd actively investigate this, and if you feel there is some legal impediment to doing what you just said, I would appreciate it if you could give me that legal site. Thank you so much.
Can I ask one more question on the agenda from the previous speaker? Could you elaborate that really all the mayor does on the agenda is assist staff in ordering the agenda? As far as my tenure up here, and once, a couple of years ago, I don't add or subtract with -- at all. It is staff, other council member who put things on, and it is staff who sets the agenda. The mayor merely decides, for purposes of conversation, how the agenda might be ordered to best facilitate the meeting.
So, yes, according to the council policy, any council member could put anything on the agenda. As staff, we do put things on the agenda that require council direction, and as a matter of policy, we do meet the mayor to go over the agenda.
Okay. Sir?
Push the button.
Push the button. Oh, it's three minutes, not two. Thank you. I'll preface my comments, you didn't get the -- oh, good, okay. I'll preface my comments with the fact that my father and my mother are both resting at Arlington National Cemetery. My father, the Colonel, who was a highly decorated WWII veteran from Normandy to the Alb, a gift to the nation to him, a resting place. This is the first week in August, and I think this is a good moment to pause for all government people involved in the doing of government, to think on this week. It was 100 years ago, this particular week, that the governments of the world descended into chaos and dragged the entirety of civilization into ruin in August of 1914. And I would also remember that in the first week of August in 1945, 69 years ago, our government needlessly murdered 250,000 innocent civilians in two Japanese cities. Governments are the only entities that have the capacity to make such horrific mistakes. Because of the awesome monopoly of power the government has, it has a particular responsibility. George Washington, the founding person of this country, upon whose efforts this country was founded, expressed it in the sense that in the beginning and the end, what government is, is force. It is the use of force, the unrestricted and unbridled ability to coerce, extort, compel, and murder within impunity. And you have a responsibility, as all members elected from the public, to serve in government as its executive committees. You have a particular responsibility to protect the public from whom you come, from the unwarranted and ill-advised use of compulsion and extortion in all your affairs, be it zoning or any other effect. That is your deepest responsibility, and I hope that you think on that on this first week of August, which is, for those of us who pray for peace, a most holy time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other commenters during open time on issues not on the agenda? Seeing none. Chief, new officer. Officer Acton, please.
Want to introduce everyone to the community to our newest officer, Nicholas Acton. Nick comes to us, he was born and raised, this is always for David, 1987. Born and raised in Cincinnati, Ohio, where he went to school in 2006. He did a stint in the Marines through 2010, is that correct? And after that, he landed himself in Marin County. He sent himself through the police academy in Santa Rosa. He recently graduated with our other newest officer, who's not here, stuck in traffic. But, and if you remember, the other officer, he claimed he was third in his class. Nick claims he's third in his class. So, we gotta figure the math out there, but again, there were only three in the class, so I remember, okay. So, with that, I think, oh, his family and friends are here, his girlfriend, Katie, they're in the back of the room, and the town clerk's gonna swear him in.
Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I --
Aye.
State your name.
Nicholas Acton.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About to, which -- upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Done?
May it be a long and terrific career here in Fairfax. Chief, thank you. Michelle, thank you as well. And with that, we move on to the consent calendar. Any thoughts from the council on the consent calendar?
I just have a question on one item.
Please.
So, I don't want to pull it, but just maybe get my question answered. On agenda item seven, and I think I'm directing this question to town manager. We talk about paying the town chair, that we're paying part of the employee's contribution to the PTS plan, and I'm wondering if we should consider phasing that out over time as employees in the town now pay, similar to what employees in the town now pay their CalPERS contribution in full. So, I'm just wondering if we should consider a phase-out so it kind of matched that.
Obviously, the council can't consider that. I think the way we structured it was because what's happening is we both don't have to pay social security, so we were both splitting it 50/50 to both sharing the benefit. So, that's why we structured it 50/50. But, it is the council's discretion to phase that out over time if it likes.
Well, I'm fine with leaving it as-is unless other council members have some concerns. It was just, I wanted to match what our employees that are in CalPERS are doing.
Any other council members?
Oh, yeah. Mayor, I'd like to take number four and make a brief presentation, if I would may.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I'd like to invite a couple of very special people to come to the front of the room. Merrill Machino and Jen Jones, could you please come forward? And if Christian Douglas is here, could you join them?
Hi. So, I want to invite everyone during the break tonight to take a quick look, or a longer look if it's not dark, at what has come to our town and to our most important community space, and that is a lovely, hard-worked-for, sweated-over, beautiful, sustainable backyard, which has been put in on the complete and total volunteer power of a great number of volunteers, but led by these wonderful people. So, I have a certificate of appreciation for each of them. I will read the first one that comes up at the top, and that is for Jen Jones. So, this is a certificate of appreciation from the Town of Fairfax for Jen Jones of Sustainable Fairfax, for her time and expertise in creating the sustainable garden, a low-water, sustainable landscape design. The plants were selected for their qualities of drought resistance, deer resistance, edible and medicinal properties, most are native to California, and provide habitat and food for insects and animals. So, you are surrounded by a sustainable, well-loved, cared-for, and gift from these folks in perpetuity to the Town of Fairfax. So, I would like to present you all with your certificates of appreciation. Merrill Machino. Christian Douglas and the Backyard Farm Company. And one more is for Melanie Peradis, who served as an advisor to these folks and put in a lot of hard work. And thank you out there to all the volunteers that did assist in the garden. So, thank you, guys.
Do you want to help out?
Any other council members want to speak to an issue on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll see if anybody in the public would like to come up and address anything on the consent calendar. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Can I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Kohler and Renee. All right, with that, we'll move on to council reports and comments.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yeah?
Shouldn't we at least pro forma say, is there any opposition to the motion? So, we're doing a motion in a second, we should at least, I think, record
On every single thing?
There's an easy way to do it. I just was bringing a point of order that on these perfunctory motions, we should record the unanimity of the vote. It shouldn't just be a motion and a second, so.
Yeah, I think you just forgot to call for the vote, that's all.
Okay. We have a first and a second?
Is there any opposition?
Is there any opposition to the
Motion.
To the motion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we have adopted it unanimously. Council reports and comments. John, you want to take off on this?
Sure, I could. I guess this is just a couple of weeks, because we just did these reports at the last one.
Since July 16th.
Since July 16th. Well, let me see, I was privileged to go on a tour of Arakippa, the Girl Scout camp and historic tuberculosis treatment area, with the Historical Society. Didn't cost anything, but it was very interesting, and we, if anybody has not checked out the amazing ceramics that came out of Arakippa for a short period of time that they were there, it's a facility that's on the western edge of Fairfax. I also worked quite a lot successfully wrapping up a, it was, it's a trail project that actually establishes that entrance, a bunch of steps down, a very steep section of access to the Edgar Redwood Preserve from the top of, the top of the property, which is at Bolinas Road and Concrete Pipe Road, right where that takes off. That's, it's an amazingly beautiful piece of property. It's also amazingly steep, and, you know, you've got to really watch where you're putting your feet and hike carefully, you know, with hiking boots, because it's, it's a really rustic area. However, this trail gets you past, it's a set of 40 steps that gets you down past the really steep part at the top, at which point there's a trail going off to the left, and many switchbacks getting down through a number of redwood groves that are there. This is a piece of property that Fairfax bought about 10 years ago, eight or 10 years ago. It was the start of the Open Space Committee, their first project. At any rate, if you're interested, please check it out. It's accessed from the top, and it certainly doesn't go all the way down to the bottom. There's about 50 switchbacks that need to be made in there, but it gets you the first distance in, and it, and please be respectful of the nature that's all around you there. That took several days, and it was an Eagle project that I will do a proclamation for the scout later, as part of his Eagle presentation. Oh, I also, also, you know, together with Barbara Kohler, as part of the Trails Committee, we met with a Conservation Corps person, went around and looked at a number of the trails around town that are basically in between the streets. These are pedestrian rights-of-way that were laid out when the town was laid out in between a various number of properties around town. There's about 120 of them. And we were fairly encouraged at talking with the Conservation Corps member, who was very enthusiastic about giving us a bid on opening up a number of them, and since we have secured a funding stream for this project, that we'll work towards doing that more in the future as years go by. And we're basically looking for the lowest-hanging fruit first, and maintaining and enhancing the trails that we've got. Couple of meetings around that, and then, you know, the council meeting on the 16th, I guess, was the only thing. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Yes. Okay, so I attended the Fairfax Climate Action Committee meeting back in July, and we developed a draft annual action plan for presentation to the General Plan Implementation Committee. Also, our next meeting is August 12th, and we'd like to encourage members of the public to attend. It's not just our group, so please come. We meet in the youth center, or I think it's called the community center now. I attended the Fairfax Open Space Meeting. John and I, as John mentioned, and our town manager, and two community representatives, Denny Ferry and Helen Faust, did a tour of some of the trails that we're hoping to open using the Conservation Corps, and we're still awaiting a proposal from them that should have been here a couple of weeks ago, so we're trying to move that forward, and it was very promising. We think we can get about four of the trails open through this process, so, and then we just keep chipping away at them. So, that's exciting, and that will be for recreation as well as for ingress and egress in times of fire, which we hope we don't encounter. I also attended an ABAG delegate meeting. There's a group of cities and counties reps that meet to talk about how the ABAG process could work better, and how, you know, how their next revision of Plan Bay Area, which is a few years out in the future, could actually work to be supportive of cities and counties rather than a top-down approach. And ABAG representatives attended and said they were very disappointed in how that worked out, and they really want to do a more supportive of cities and the county. And one of the things we learned in that process is they have a lot of resources to help cities and counties in the Bay Area, so we want to get more information on educational information that they have, that's things they're doing, work on sea level rise. There's a lot of good projects that they're involved in. And also, like all of us, I attended the special town council meeting on July 24th. Thanks.
Larry?
Just the town council meeting on the 24th.
Renee?
Yeah, I attended the first part of the county's Planning Commission meeting, as they're talking through the housing element. And then I was involved in a conference call, coming back together for the school year for the Coalition on Healthy Youth, thinking about how we're planning to kick off the school year with all the back-to-school nights and the orientations, the kids going into elementary, middle, and high school, and starting to really make sure that parents know some of the facts, some of the figures, what the county's learning more and more about the drug and alcohol problem that we're dealing with in the county, not only in the youth, but at the level of our adult uses and abuses of substance. So, yeah.
Okay, a couple of things. Around the 16th, I attended a Flood Zone 9 meeting. It was held at the Bennett House, actually, which provided a great forum. The IJ has reported and editorialized on a particular issue that I wanted to relate to the council and the community. There was a question about monies that are being expended from the flood fee to hire a consulting firm to better inform the community about flood issues. And the IJ was critical of this, and it was, I just want the community to know that I was the sole vote on the advisory board to actually object to the spending of the fee money from the community, to actually tell the community about the flood activities, particularly since, in my opinion, county staff has done a remarkably good job and maintained a very comprehensive website, and holds regularly well-attended meetings at Drake High School to keep the community informed, as well as the quarterly meetings that the advisory board holds. So, I thought that my decision was consistent with Fairfax's approach on that. that. Beyond that, the chamber here held a very good forum on ADA, a number- well, two that I know of. Businesses in town have been sued under ADA. And as you can imagine, the business community is very concerned about a very technical law and how they can comply with it appropriately. And the chamber put on an excellent, excellent presentation. For any businesses, business owners that are here that didn't get a chance to observe it, or those who might be watching on Channel 27, please contact the chamber and have Bob Koppelman walk you through this. It's important. The penalties are rather steep and the obligations are very important to comply with. Of course, the mayor and town manager meet with the chamber once a month to discuss what's going on in the business community for an hour and a half, two hours. I also attended, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, Matt Tasly's show, Our Artist in Residence. To say that he's a prolific artist completely understates it. The man completely filled up the pavilion from wall to wall with his rather extraordinary work. And if you get a chance to see it during the show that's coming up, I strongly recommend it. And finally, I had the opportunity to stop in and say, I think, a final good farewell to Chief Meeger on his formal retirement party that was held by the fire department. And of course, we wished him all the best in his retirement. So, with that, we will turn to the manager's report. And I will have a question for you, Garrett, after you've made your report.
I have no report.
In that case, I want to pick up a point that was raised this evening, as well as at the last meeting. It is true that we meet in closed session a lot. Certainly, it seems before every meeting for months and months. And there were a number of items on that. And I think the community might appreciate knowing why we meet in closed session. It is an opportunity for the council's lawyer. The town attorney is the council's lawyer. And this is her opportunity to speak to her client confidentially, just as any of you would have the opportunity to speak to your lawyer or doctor-patient in that way. So, it's absolutely critical when we're facing or in the midst of a litigation, or there's an issue of employment, and a couple of others that are strictly delineated under the important open meetings law known as the Brown Act. But under that, Garrett, you and I have discussed, and I think it's very important, to the extent that we can, I think that we should be able to tell people certain information that they would have to be very careful readers of the budget to figure out, very careful and knowledgeable readers. And I think in years past, we have not told people about how much it costs to do certain pieces of litigation, how much the Michael McIntosh issue cost this town. John has commented about the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we expended in taxpayer money. And so, I know that this is a contentious issue, but I think it's important for the public to know as we go forward about the high cost of litigation. We have excellent- let's see if we can close it. There we go. We have excellent legal counsel. I believe that her firm charges a very modest and fair rate for the work that she does. But with that, I want to begin a process when we enter into expensive litigation or expensive engineering to, on a monthly basis, for you to report to our community exactly what expenses are. So, with that, we are currently in litigation on the matter of Edgar versus Gardner. Would you tell me and tell the community, how much money have we spent to date or up until a certain number of months, what we have expended on litigation in this matter?
For that matter alone, it's been going for about three months. We have separated out- whenever we get a piece of litigation, we separate out into a separate matter number. So, May, June, and July, for those three months, and it's not over. There's been some work already in the month of August. But for those three months, it's been approximately $30,000, $32,000, $33,000.
That takes us up to when?
End of July.
Okay. Next month, please be able to update us if there are additional fees in this matter.
And that's just solely on that particular writ matter? It does not include the work that was additional for the referendum, for example? That is included in the general services number. So, there was an increase in the general services number for the writ- for the referendum petition as well for that work. So, that's what I quoted you as just solely that writ petition, okay?
Gareth, please make that a regular part of your book of business on any matter whatsoever, so that the public can be fully informed of where their tax dollars are going. With that, we move on to number nine and adoption of ordinance 781. Garrett, will you lead us off on that?
Sure. Ordinance 781, that's an interim urgency zoning ordinance that prohibits approval of formula businesses and formula restaurants within the highway commercial CH zone. So, perhaps as some background, with the pending repeal of ordinance 778, what will happen is that properties that were rezoned highway commercial CH to central commercial CC will go back to its initial zoning, which is CH. Now, item of note, the impetus for the whole conversion from CH to CC really was in response to the lack of formula-based business controls within the CH zone. And that came about when the council was having its discussion related to a gas station proposing a national brand at that time. So, that's why we went for the CH to CC. But, so what will happen is when ordinance 778 is repealed, the properties go back to CH. CH zone has no formula-based business requirement in it. While staff is going to the Planning Commission with proposed zoning amendments to put in formula-based business controls, within it, there's going to be a gap in time between when we can get that done and when the property goes to CH. And so, what's going on is this moratorium, what it does, it puts, in essence, a hold, or staff will not be able to issue any permits or approvals for any business classified as a formula-based business or restaurant during a 45-day period. Now, it's just an initial 45-day period. After that, or sometime during that, the council can always extend it. You may recall previously, prior to ordinance 778, we did have a moratorium on all development within the CH zone, but that was actually for 45 days, plus it was extended, but it expired when ordinance 778 came into effect. So, again, while we're moving through the process, and right now, the timing is originally in the staff report, we had thought we can go to the Planning Commission in August with the language. It looks like now that's going to be more like September. Part of that is just to avoid any confusion over when the ordinance actually, 778 is repealed, that takes effect beginning of September, assuming you do the second reading tonight. And then we'll go to the Planning Commission in September. And what we do plan to do is add language in the CH zone for formula-based businesses. And we plan to modify the language in the CC zone so that both zones have the same language for formula-based businesses. And that's what we're going to take to the Planning Commission in September. That will come to the council in either October or November. And so, what we're recommending this evening is that you conduct the public hearing, and then you adopt ordinance number 781, interim urgency zoning ordinance prohibiting approvals of formula-based businesses and restaurants within the highway commercial zone. Back to the staff report.
Questions of Garrett.
I have a quick question. And you may have said, but if I may, the 45-day interim ordinance, can that be extended if we don't get through the- it can be extended?
Yes. What will happen is, as we move through the process, most likely, it looks like maybe we come back to you in September and you extend it to expire whenever the actual zoning amendment takes place for formula-based businesses.
John.
My question is basically the same thing. I understand that that 45-day period is the standard with law, and then we have to take the further action to extend it.
Yes, that's the maximum amount of time initially. It's set by statute.
Okay, good.
I just have one question. So, it's on page two of the ordinance on the last whereas, before the now therefore. The end of the last sentence, I guess it's all one sentence, says, "while ensuring that out-of-state formula businesses are not unfairly discriminated against," et cetera. I'm assuming that that's standard language, but I'm wondering if it should be, "while ensuring that in-state or out-of-state formula businesses?" It just seemed- so-
Sure, we can do that.
It just seems to me that that would be the best way to do it. Was that clear or not clear?
It is clear. You know, Janet, while you're at it, because I know that deep inside every lawyer is a law professor, if you want to tell us what the dormant commerce clause means?
You're not to discriminate against businesses, out-of-state businesses for products. You're not supposed to protect your own businesses.
No, you have to say it again. Sipia has to speak closer to the mic.
You're not supposed to discriminate against out-of-state businesses to protect your own local businesses.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Just real quickly, as far as the definitions that have been used, those are the definitions from the existing ordinance?
That's correct. It's taken verbatim from existing ordinance.
So, right now, CH would be consistent with CC as far as the prohibition on formula store or formula business. Sorry. Just confirming that the definitions we're using in tonight's resolution are basically cut and pasted from our existing ordinance that we've got in the central commercial district.
That's correct.
Word for word.
Verbatim.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll see if there's public comment on this item. Please come on up and share your thoughts with us for two minutes. Good evening, Lou.
Push the button, please. Push the button.
There you go. Yeah, is it okay if I just voice my concerns?
About this item?
Which one?
About the proposed moratorium. Number nine on the agenda.
No, I was- Yeah, no, I don't have anything on that.
Okay, then share your thoughts with us when we get to those items a little bit further down the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak on number nine? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Thoughts from the council members?
I would move adoption of ordinance number 781. I would move adoption of ordinance 781.
That's second.
We have a motion. Bragman, Renee, any objections, or is everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, unanimous. Therefore, moving on to number 10, a discussion and consideration of the residents' petition regarding the noise ordinance. And before we even start that, I want to thank Bob Stempel, who's patiently waited for a number of meetings. And I'm glad we're able to take this up earlier in the meeting for you this evening. With that, Garrett, perhaps a short introduction.
So, as background, a group of residents submitted a petition that's attached to the staff report to council consideration. Now, according to town code, if residents- 25 residents sign a petition, that item can actually be placed on the agenda for discussion. And so, the petition concerns proposed revisions to the town's noise ordinance and enforcement of the ordinance. You may recall back in February, actually, back in May, council actually discussed the issue of noise related to Deer Park and potential revisions to the noise ordinance. At that time, the council determined that it wasn't at the point where it wanted to consider any revisions to the noise ordinance, and you asked it to be agendized for future meeting. That's not this evening. Tonight, really, it's a petition from the residents regarding, well, best we describe it, perhaps their noise and enforcement concerns. Again, one other item is in February and May, staff had reported back to the council that currently we believe the noise ordinance is poorly written and, as a result, really needs to be revised. As a result, our police department is enforcing it as they believe to be appropriate until the ordinance is revised. Ultimately, we'd be recommending language in the future to revise the ordinance to clarify the enforcement mechanism. We're not advocating any changes to the decimal levels, but that's something to be considered in the future by the council. So, with that, that concludes the staff report. And the chief is also here to answer any questions.
Any questions of Garrett on this? Larry.
Have we done any inspection of Deer Park to see if they've made any of the improvements that they've discussed doing? Sorry. Has any staff done any inspection of Deer Park to see if they've done any of the sound abatement improvements that have been discussed?
We haven't been out there recently, but we did see the sound wall, and we did see at the time the green wall. I haven't gone back to see how well it's grown in, but it was- the infrastructure was in place and the plants were planted.
Okay, because there was also discussion about doing some abatement on the opposite side of the performance space and maybe getting an acoustical engineer to take a look at it.
We'd have to check on that.
Okay, that might be worth following up.
John?
Well, I mean, I think that what Councilman Bragman suggested is imperative, because we have to see what actions have been taken so far.
So, might I add?
I mean, when I was out there probably about six weeks ago and looked, you know, and I saw their start of the green wall, which personally, I don't have a lot of confidence in, because, you know, seeing hanging plants aren't really going to stop a lot of noise. However, the- they had a more structural wall that was adjacent to one of the buildings that they had there, which I think could go a long way towards decreasing the noise going to the neighbors. And also, on the hill-
Opposite.
Opposite, you know, across that creek there. You know, the bounce sound is going to bounce off of things there. And, you know, engineering that so that that bounce sound doesn't happen, or, you know, doesn't point at the neighbors.
So, John, might I add that I was there about an hour ago?
Oh, great.
Maybe two.
Perhaps you can give us a-
And, no, because I was interested in how the green wall's coming in. And I think that really, as I've studied a bit, that the green wall can actually mitigate the sound quite well. They didn't succeed this time on which plants they planted for the green wall. I know some wonderful gardeners who might be able to help them. But I do think there's potential there. But I do think we need to get to them and express our concern on that. The walls also hold great potential. I know they put one up, and it was in place. They connected two of the buildings that are just opposite the green wall, actually. And I think that we could use a little more wallage. But I think they've made a good start. So, that's what I observed.
Can I just ask a point of order? This is to discuss, consider the residents' petition regarding the noise ordinance. And when we've taken up Deer Park Villa before and the concerns, it's specifically been surrounding that. So, I'm wondering if we're not really focusing on the petition of the residents.
That's a good point. Let me just sort of drill down a little bit, Bob, and I'm looking forward to the conversation we're going to have in a minute. But I think Garrett raised a very interesting point. And it's, in a sense, what we've been dealing with since May. We have an ancient ordinance that dates from the very early 1980s, which we've asked our former police chief, Chief Hughes, who served us so well for so many years, and the current police chief, and both agree that it's not a well-written ordinance. It's confusing. We have a new general plan, and the general plan, and of course, the existing noise ordinance are not in concert with one another. So, there's work to be done on two fronts. There's a current ordinance, which isn't really effectively working anywhere. And we have a general plan that has to either be brought forward to be- so that the council can consider changes to the noise ordinance, or else we have to consider changes perhaps to the noise part of the general element of the general plan itself. So, you're sort of capturing us through the discomfort of the noise at a very tentative moment. And so, I'm looking forward, as you speak this evening, to share with us your thoughts. And we will try, I think, to give some level of comfort to you. But I really get the sense that what we're going to try to do is bring this back sometime, I discussed with the manager, you know, sometime in the middle of next year, when we have a little more time and our plate is a little less stacked. is a little less stacked, to try to address the concerns of the ordinance and the new part of the general plan. So with that, if you would like to join us, certainly we'd like to hear what you have to say.
I kind of don't know where to begin because you're throwing so much at me. First of all, I'd like to say, just from experience on the other side of the sound wall, that it is not effective. It's continued to be a problem. And the fact that my opportunity to speak to you has been postponed by three months just adds evidence to the fact that things are not getting better, have not gotten better, and I see no indication of them getting better. But that, I came here to speak of the ordinance, not that particular issue. First of all, I'd like to call attention to something I really didn't think was going to be necessary. But part of the petition says, it quotes the code as saying that whenever an ordinance is in a situation like this, where it has to be looked at, modified, and whatnot, it is specifically said that it is supposed to be continually enforced until the modification is complete. So I don't think that the town code allows us to put it on hold for a year until we find better wording. That's point number three in the petition. I question the claim that the ordinance is poorly worded. I did some research to find out what would be better wording, and I was surprised to find out that almost exactly the word-for-word wording that we have in Fairfax is used in various communities up and down California. So this isn't something that was just cobbled together by a bunch of hacks who didn't know what they were doing. This is used, and by doubt with much question, in other jurisdictions in the state. The proposed change that I have in point number two in the petition is also a very commonly-used one throughout this state. It is a little bit more simple, unlike the proposed change that I think it was the town manager that presented in May, which was shelved. It doesn't bring up extraneous things like distorted music or obscene lyrics. It just addresses the exact same issues as our current correction for quality of sound. I question the fact, again, as I said, that our current correction for quality of sound is poorly worded. I think it says very clearly that certain types of objectionable sound, music and speech being among them, should be held to a lower standard. I mean, they should be judged as exceeding the standard at five decibels lower than other types of noise. It does mention that the police chief or his designated representative is a person who shall determine whether or not the offending noise is music or speech or other types of things. But it doesn't give any type of discretion in applying the ordinance. I'd like to also mention the fact that it takes, I think Garrett said that 25, it takes 25 residents to sign a petition to get something put on the agenda. 60 residents signed the agenda, excuse me, signed the petition, the majority of which do not live within earshot of Deer Park Villa. Now, you know that my issue, of course, is with loud events that have both music and speech from Deer Park Villa. But it seems that a lot of people understand that when you start toying with which ordinances you enforce and which ones you don't enforce affects the entire town. It's just not something that a council should just say, oh, yeah, well, let's continue not enforcing part of the ordinance, and let's wait until, oh, sometime next year because one businessman wants us to do that. That's basically where I'm seeing, that's basically the way things look from my perspective. It's a fairly clearly worded ordinance. I don't understand what is meant by inconsistencies and poorly wording and whatnot. It does mention that the police chief is supposed to judge whether or not the nature of the, the nature of the offending noise is, among other things, speech and music, but that's it. There is no discretion whatsoever about whether or not it should be enforced. Right now, of course, the police chief is not the one who normally is called to do a sound reading. And so it would not be his place to judge whether or not the offending sound is music or speech, but his designated representative, meaning the officer who comes to do the sound reading, would be the person who does that. That officer is not allowed to do that now because it's already been determined before the party even started, before the party was even booked, probably, that it is not music or speech, or that the ordinance is not going to be enforced. I don't quite understand which, but it doesn't make sense. It, so that's where I stand on this.
I think it might be helpful before we hear from the other speakers, because you're the proponent and the community focal point. I think we're going to need a little comment from the chief, and we're going to need a little comment from Garrett on this, on how you want to go forward on this.
I thought you were going to hear from the other speakers.
I think Bob has just raised a number of points. We should address his points, and then we'll hear from the other speakers, of course.
We can do that, although maybe a suggestion is perhaps the others have more points, and we could just answer it all at once.
As you wish. Okay, Bob, have a seat. Let's hear from the other folks. Yvette? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you standing there. Please.
Okay, thank you. Woohoo, okay, all night. Okay. I'm here to read the exact wording of the the ordinance in question. This is, I live right next to Deer Park Villa, and I am affected by the parties. They do continue to be loud. Last Sunday night, Sunday night, actually, there was a very loud party. Sergeant O'Callaghan came out, and he did a reading, and it was barely, almost at 50 decibels at the end of the party when they'd lowered the music. So I guess I'm going to continue doing so until we can resolve what's happening with the decibel level at the height of the party. I would like to read this part of the ordinance that says correction for character of sound. And those of you who have a computer or smartphone with you, you're welcome to get on the Fairfax noise ordinance. It's section 8.2.050. And you can scroll down to this correction for character of sound. It says, "In the event the alleged offensive noise, as judged by the chief of police or his or her designated representative, contains a steady audible tone or contains music or speech," I skipped a bunch of other kinds of noises, "the standard limit set forth in the table below shall be reduced by five decibels." In my understanding of that, to my understanding of that, that means that the officer or chief of police that come out to hear what kind of sound is happening, that they are the judge of whether it is music or speech. And then the ordinance requires the limit to be lowered by five decibels. And I would say to you, from my personal experience, that is a significant change in my experience from 55 to 50, as the limit would be lowered from 55 to 50. And that would make a significant difference in my life. I think there is a reason that this correction is here. I think it is because music and speech are very invasive in our lives when they're amplified. We are required and sort of trained to listen to words and spoken or sung words, and that we are not able to really have peace in our homes when we have words and music and amplified speech coming in. So I think there is a reason that this ordinance is here. And I think that it seems like it would be a good thing to enforce from my perspective, not just for me who lives near Deer Park, but maybe for all of Fairfax. Now, this doesn't mean if your neighbor is having a party and it doesn't bother you, it doesn't mean the police are going to shut down the party. It just means if people have issues, they should have rights as well with that kind of level of sound. Just on a personal note, my children are, right at the time the party is going, they are distracted by the music and speech. They hear the music, you know, radioactive, radioactive, you know, is going on, and it isn't particularly appropriate for a four-year-old and a seven-year-old to be listening to. You know, "We're up all night to get lucky," or whatever that is, whatever song is playing. I have to say, it is invasive. And I thank you for your time and your consideration. And I also, as my neighbor Bob requests, that this ordinance be enforced. Thank you.
Thanks. Yvette?
Sisan, I'm really happy to see you addressing this matter. I've been speaking to you about noise problems in Fairfax for many, many years, and the problems have only gotten worse. The volumes have gotten louder. And you know I had a real bad problem with the Little League in the ballpark, and a lot of people did. And David, I remember at a meeting you saying your neighbors were complaining to you about it. It's like they're pretending they're Candlestick Park. So, and I just found out that our general plan has to address the noise issue. So I guess that's online for me to look up and find out. I want to see what that says. And I may have misheard, but I thought when I went to the planning commission meeting that they did discuss the noise ordinance coming to them, and that I believe town staff had recommended that the decibel levels be put higher for tolerance because the background noise of traffic was so loud anyway, it didn't make sense to keep the decibel levels the same. Now, maybe I misheard. That should be in the minutes. I could have. But I really thought that was the plan. And I apologize if I was mistaken, but I'd like to see the minutes to see what was said about that, because those words were mentioned in that, in those respects. And something like when you have the the town festival, you can be at the library and you won't hear any noise at all. It'll be really quiet. But you can be two blocks over in the other direction, and you can't get away from it. It's just pounding through your apartment if you live there. Or when I lived up on the hills, it'd be pounding through my windows, coming through like that all the time. And it's awful. So not everyone is affected by all the noise at all times, but a lot of people are, and I'm glad to see you addressing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvette. Next.
Valerie Hood, 79 Dominga. I actually asked to be put on the same listserv to hear about the noise, because as I walk through the, through the town, I've noticed that the noise has gotten much, much louder from garron gullies. And it's constant now, it seems. Every evening, it's very, very loud. And you can hear it from a lot of different places. You don't have to be a block away. You can be up in the hills. You can be around a corner up in the hills, and you hear it. And you can hear, like I said one time, every word of Michael Jackson's song, you know, not really appropriate, that's for sure. And I'm also in support of having the noise ordinance be lower, not higher, if anything lower, please. And I really appreciate the residents who've been putting up with this for such a long time. Also, it's a straw horse to talk about a sound wall made out of vegetation. Vegetation does not block sound. You can grow redwoods, and you can grow redwoods to the point where they touch bark between themselves and grow together. Now, that's basically a fence. That kind does work. And when I was an environmental studies major at Sonoma State, one of the things we did do was went around to look at sound walls. And it was consensus that living walls do not work. I don't think that the vegetation has changed since I was in school. But there was consensus also that what did work was when plants were, when trees were planted close enough for the trunks to actually go together and merge. But essentially, that's a wall. Okay? And it really does matter how thick they are. And some have more absorbing qualities, such as redwood. But the idea that you're going to plant a few trees and a few leaves, and that's going to make a difference, it just doesn't work. Thank you.
Any other comments this evening? Shelley?
Shelley Hamilton, 134 Canyon Road. I wanted to just talk a little bit about the Fourteenth Amendment equal application under the law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. And I agree with you that I do believe that we should be looking at, that we're talking about equality under the law. And that's what we're here for, is to equally apply a law. And I applaud you for coming forward and talking about the noise ordinance. So rather than having two individual citizens duke it out and try and obstruct the law and fight it and say, it doesn't apply to me, and I'm going to fight that law by obstructing the application of it simply to me, I appreciate that you're coming forward and trying to work with the town as a whole to create better laws for us all. So that's what I wanted to say, that I appreciate, and I would like to see us work cooperatively in that way, because I think it reduces our risk exposure for people who get frustrated and decide, you know what, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying, but I'm just going to obstruct it because it's impacting me, and I'm going to look out for myself. So I really appreciate that we're having the conversation about the ordinance. I'm looking forward to hearing about the connection between the noise ordinance and the noise element. And I would like to hear from the people who are experiencing this, if they've read through the noise element, and if the noise element and town staff to come forward, and I guess that's the process, is looking at the noise element in our general plan, what does that say, and then how would it inform improving our noise ordinances and our noise laws? And it's universal, things like quality of sound and volume of sound. And it covers the gamut from chickens and fowl, which I think should just be part of the noise ordinance, to music and voice and machinery. And we've conversations around electric machines versus not. It's all under that universal application of quality of sound and volume of sound. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelley. Other comments? Sierra?
Good afternoon morning. A number of years, this thing's too short. A number of years back, I lived on Forest Avenue, and we got a lot of sound from the bars coming up. It was a bother. And to some people, I was the devil incarnate for a while because I had circulated a petition, and what I'd asked is that the bars downtown, some of which, like Perry's, are built like a bomb shelter, just keep their doors and windows closed. Because once the sound gets, as long as the sound's inside, it's enjoyable. It's great. It's fun. Once you open the doors, once the sound is, once the genie's out of the bottle, there's no stopping it. And it bounces around. There's like, you know, micro environments where it's like one house will get all kinds of sound, and another won't hear anything. I mean, sound moves in mysterious ways. It just does. Anyway, some people thought I was trying to put the kibosh on music in town and wanted to shut down the bars, which wasn't the case. But in terms of sound, whatnot, I think the ordinance isn't very good. Personally, I think the sound should be measured at the edge of the property of where the sound is coming from, and not at the edge of the property of the complainant, which is a totally different thing. And most places, aside from like an outdoor wedding, the sound can be kept inside and mitigated with doors being shut and whatnot. Sound isn't assault. There's a thing called noise pollution. It's called pollution for a reason. And if you think about the natural environments of things that actually live places, there's a lot of things that are disrupted by any amount of sound, be it cars, be it jackhammers, be it almost anything other than like the sounds of wind and water and air, for example. And humans are kind of a polluting plague. We really are. Most of us are pretty insensitive to sound, but it's real. Some people, a ticking alarm clock or not alarm clock, but like a clock will bug the heck out of them, keep them from sleeping. Sound has effects, even including like speakers coming out of businesses on sidewalks. I've walked past some businesses and had sound. Sometimes it's soft, sometimes it's blaring. But what is public space? What is personal space? And when you start taking speakers, for example, outside of business, what's, you know, what, some people like all kinds of music, and I know, David, there's a lot of points here. Public space. Anyway, I think that the property, the sound ordinance does need to get re-looked at. And I seriously ask you to look at making the sound reading happen at the edge of the property line where the sound is coming from. Sound can be a big bother and be underneath the limits by the decibel readings. And it can be extremely irritating. And I don't think the ordinance has a lot of teeth. I mean, it might be worded and sound good, but when it comes to actually enforcing it, good luck. And sound, noise is pollution.
Thank you, Sierra. Other comments? Anybody else? If not, we will close the public hearing and bring it back. Garrett, there's been a number of questions, starting with Bob and then other folks. Do you want to start discussing it?
Sure, maybe a couple of things. One is, it's true, in, I think it was May, when we, was it May? Anyway, in May, we did come back to the council with proposed revisions to the noise ordinance. In that discussion, we did indicate the general plan did provide analysis. That analysis indicated analysis indicated the acceptable level of noise inside a house is upwards of 45 decibels. What it indicated in the general plan is that the structure of a home can reduce the outside noise by 15, so what's acceptable outside is 60, and that's what the general plan says. It doesn't mean that we need to change any limits. It just says, that's what the general plan was indicating. It also has some analysis on traffic noise, the levels of traffic noise at key intersections in town. The ambient noise increases just because it has over time. But that doesn't mean that you have to change anything, but that was just a discussion that was provided by staff. Now, in terms of enforcement, maybe the best way to describe it is police departments enforcing the ordinance as they believe appropriate, and so that is in their discretion to decide that. And with that, I don't think there's much more to add, other than if you'd like the chief to shed any light on any issues.
Chief, it is a difficult issue, and perhaps you can give us both the historical background and how you think this can best be enforced, you know, because we have two valuable communities. One is obviously the folks who signed the petition and the many others who would have. And on the other hand, we have a historic business which is abutting it. What, without commenting too much on this, what I'm looking at with faith is the fact that we have faced noise concerns in the past, good earth, and we resolved it. Yvette reminds us of the fact we had the ball field noise, a simpler problem, but we resolved it for the most part. And so at least my role here as one council member is trying to find the way to the happy medium. And with that, perhaps you could talk to us about the enforcement steps that, or the enforcement approach that your department takes.
Well, this, as we know, is a very difficult issue for the community and the business itself, when we're talking about Deer Park, but we have this issue throughout town, as some of the speakers have spoken on. In just 2014, we've investigated 182 noise complaints. So in seven months, we've looked into 182 noise complaints. Thirty of those were Deer Park Villa. People are annoyed by noise in town, and we do our best to enforce either the law or the request of the caller, whether it be contact the offending party, please turn the offending noise down, or taking sound readings and taking enforcement action. I don't truly, well, first of all, we are enforcing the ordinance, as Garrett said, and I think we're enforcing it in the spirit in which it's intended. While you could read the ordinance and say that it's clearly written, others can read it and feel that it's not clear, and specifically, I think we're all talking about the section that talks about at the chief, "As judged by the chief, such and such noises, the noise or the tables or the limit shall be lowered." I'm of the opinion that that is poorly written. I don't interpret it that way. There's very few sections in the town code that give the police chief the discretion to, as it says, "As judged by." And when it's talking about that, it's alluding to speech and music. I don't think the police chief or his designee needs to decide what speech or music is. Speech or music is speech or music. So our forefathers at the dais that wrote this, wrote this paragraph that's kind of all encompassing of all types of noises, while putting the onus on the police chief to decide if speech or music, as judged by him, if that's the offending noise. That one paragraph kind of puts the whole table that's lower later in the section that gives the decibel levels, that one paragraph kind of puts, throws that whole table away, because it almost includes any type of noise that's occurring. So the paragraph says, if you read it that way, "Lower it by five." Well, then what's the point of the table? Then the table should be thrown out, or the table should just be lowered by five, all in all, and get rid of the paragraph. It's my opinion. I did speak with, as you mentioned earlier, the former police chief, who'd been here for 30 some odd years, started here in 1976. His belief is that the intent of that section was not to, the intent of the section wasn't to just lower it, let me back, let me reverse that. The intent, he felt that when they wrote that, first of all, that it's never been enforced, that particular paragraph, and that to enforce it for one segment of the community or one offending problem becomes arbitrary and compresious. And in law enforcement, we do have to interpret laws as they're written. Courts obviously interpret them, and you get case law out of it, as you all know. The town code sections usually don't have that luxury of getting courts to opine upon it and have case decisions that clarify what the section meant. So part of my job is to interpret those sections. I don't interpret it that I have to lower the decibel reading or the decibel level from the table, and that's why in my discussions with Garrett that I suggested that we look at and revamp the ordinance, because it is not clear, in my opinion. We have a problem. I don't disagree with the residents who are offended by it. Sierra, at the end of his statement, made a very on-the-spot comment that no matter what the level is, it's the noise, if it's lower than the levels, if I quoting him right, it's offending, it's offensive to people. Some of the speakers spoke about the types of music that are being played that are inappropriate for some people to hear or children to hear. Well, even if you lower it to 50 or 45 or 40, that offending, the words are still there, so that's not going to go away. Just as another point of reference, if we talk about the bone of contention here, the lowering, the lowering it, again, getting rid of the table and lowering it, there were, in the recent past, I keep modifying what I want the officers to do when they go out there. And on the recent complaints, when we, when there is no violation, we don't write a report and we don't log what the reading was. The officer goes out, takes the reading, and it's a violation or not, and we deal with it appropriately if it's a violation. But lately, I've been having them give me, in the computer record, the reading that they got when they cleared the call, saying there was no violation. And of the last six times that we took readings, the decibel level was at or below 50. So even if it was lowered, now, in the time span we're talking about, a violation would be 56. If we lowered it and it was 51, six of the recent readings we took were below 50, so they wouldn't have even been a violation if the level was lower. One hovered between 54 and 60. Again, wouldn't be a, would be a violation if it was 50, but at the 55, it's not. I'm sorry, at the 56, it's not. And some people are confused too. When you read the table, when it says 50 or 55, it's not a violation at 50. It's a violation at 51. You have to exceed the table itself. I don't really know if I answered the question. And just as another point of reference for the community as well as the council, in 2014, of those 30 complaints that we investigated at the Deer Park Villa, 12 of those 30, the music had stopped prior to our arrival or during a noise reading. Seven of the complaints of the 30, the person calling did not want a reading. They just want the call logged, so we have no idea whether it was a violation or not. And 11 of the 30, we did take a reading, and there was no violation of those 11 readings. And again, I broke that down earlier. Six of those 11, when we started tracking the thing, six were at or below 50, which wouldn't have been a violation at 50.
Question?
Okay, hold on a minute. With that, Chief, thank you very much. Let's take some comments from councilman Ms. Barber.
Yeah, I just have a question. So I have two questions for the chief. Thank you. So if we specifically give the example of Deer Park Villa, the commercial noise-
Deer Party.
Okay, all right. And then the other thing in the table, so I worked at the air district in enforcement, and part of what our inspectors had to do on certain readings was to stand there for 20 minutes, doing a constant reading. And when I see this table, it says levels not to be exceeded more than seven and a half minutes for any 15-minute period. So when your officers or yourself are doing the reading, you have to stand there for 15 minutes and get a straight seven and a half minute reading, correct?
Yes. The reading has to occur over a 15-minute period, and there has to be a violation, the level has to be exceeded for seven and a half minutes in that 15-minute period, not seven and a half continuous minutes. Seven and a half minutes of the 15, there has to be exceeding the table.
Okay. So I think that's also, I'm not sure, but it's possible that there's peaks and valleys in the music, so it may be difficult to hit the seven and a half minutes. Even if the table was crystal clear and the five, lowering it by decibel, by five decibels was crystal clear, they're still needing to have the seven and a half minutes, correct?
Yes, and you're correct. It does become difficult to reach or sustain a violation when you have peaks and valleys in music, unless it's a certain kind of music that never, you know, like rave music that never, never goes down. It's just constant. That's an easy one. But peaks and valleys of music, and the length of a song, so it, and then is the next song kick in, or is there a little break? It becomes very problematic, and the officers, it doesn't take them just 50 minutes. They're on these calls for 45 minutes or an hour sometimes. So they're out of service, because we're trying to, we're trying to work with both sides. We're trying to do the best we can. It's a difficult process to enforce this ordinance.
Yeah, well, I would just assume, just to try to get a clear 15 minutes, because you're talking to the complainant, you're trying to follow-
Well, when we take the reading, I'm sorry to interrupt, but when we take the reading, it's absolute quiet. We can't have any noise, because the machine will pick up, it picks up a lot of stuff. Our leather gear, all kinds. We've got to sit pretty still to eliminate all those extra noises.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Are there cases, Chief, when you aren't able to complete the reading over that sustained period of time, over the 15 minutes, because officers are called out, or if it's supervisors, right, at this point going out?
Well, yes, there is. Sometimes we've had to be called away. Sometimes we can't go when the call comes in. So yes, that does occur. And yes, one of the latest revisions that I've done to ensure there's less people making mistakes on our end is I'm, now I only have, I don't have the officers handle these calls. I have the supervisor do it, because they have specific direction from me and an understanding of the ordinance and how it should be done. We're not perfect, but I, to have everyone do it, I can't reach everybody and make sure they clearly understand it, so now I have the supervisors respond to these calls.
Okay, thanks. And one last question. Of that 180 calls, how many, if you have the data, how many were residential?
I don't have that-
You don't have that? Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Larry?
Just a comment. I don't really understand why the Deer Park neighborhood is considered multiple dwelling. I'm a little bit perplexed as to how a single-family neighborhood was thrown in with multiple dwelling, and maybe there's some history there that I don't know about, but that seems a little anomalous, that that particular neighborhood is called out for higher levels. I mean, most of the structures there are single-family. It's a residential neighborhood. Another anomaly I see with the ordinance is that daytime limits go till 10:00 PM. Well, 10:00 PM is not daytime. It's nighttime. You know, maybe we should consider calling it a night at 8:00, 9:00, instead of 10:00. I mean, isn't the part, I mean, you know, it's not that simple. I mean, I have mediated these disputes. I had one where the neighborhood in downtown Fairfax was bothered by the sound of a preschool playground. Children playing in the morning were bothering some of the neighbors, so you'd think, wow, how could that be a problem? Well, it was, for some of the people, you know, and then obviously for others, it's not. So, but those two things about the ordinance really stand out. 10:00, 10:00 PM is considered daytime in Fairfax. I'm not so sure that that really flies anymore, and I wonder really, as a practical matter, if we, if we made it a little earlier, whether that might not be an approach that would kind of at least get to a middle ground for the neighbors without harming the business, because I understand, it is a business, you know, and he, and they have their separate, you know, needs to keep themselves going and, you know, but those are my comments, and perhaps we could get a conversation going with all the parties about making some adjustments here. So, and, you know, as far as the general plan recommending that we raise the decibel limit, to me, it's a nonstarter. I mean, that's not going to be improving the quality of life in Fairfax. It's just, you know, that's kind of surrendering the quality of life in Fairfax. So those are my comments right now.
Chief, did you ever thought on this?
I would just like, Larry, the Zone A and Zone B, Zone A being residential, Zone B, multi-dwelling residential, I agree, I agree with everything you said. I just want to comment a couple of things. Maybe Jim Moore knows the answer to that, why it's that way, but that's the way it is in the tables and in the code, and that's what we enforce. And for a long time, we didn't even know it was Zone B, because it doesn't make any sense. We were enforcing it at Zone A, which is 50, 51. We didn't get any violations out of it at the time, but once we learnt it was Zone B, we had to start enforcing it as Zone B. Why it's that way, we don't know. I agree with the times. I think it should be lowered, and the time should be backed down, but that's not, obviously, for me. I just enforce what you guys give us. And then the only other comment that I forgot to mention was the ambient levels that were, because this, we're not sound engineers. This is a very difficult process for us, but the ambient levels are higher than they were when this ordinance was written, and on many of these readings that we're taking, the ambient levels often are in the mid-40s. And, you know, if you're talking about a violation at 50, above 50 or above 55, or if, well, whatever it is, if you're already in the mid-40s, then any person, business, or residence, or whatever, whatever noise they're producing, they have a very limited amount that they can add to what's already there. So again, that, it just goes back to, it's a difficult process. I've spoken with many, many of our residents, all the way up till this week, and I feel for them. I've been out there. I don't take the readings, because I'm not, it's not my job, per se, but my job is everything. But I've been out there on nights, I've come into town when I know there, that there's an event, and I've listened to it in the neighborhood. And on some of those nights that the officer has taken a reading, when I look at the reports in the morning, and I see that it wasn't a violation, having been there, I can clearly understand, living there, how it would annoy, annoy, annoy the resident. But it's either a violation or it's not, and that's what becomes problematic. And Deer Parks, you know, if they're operating with their limits, maybe they're not being a good neighbor, but at this point, the stance is if they're within their limits, that's not much more they can do.
We've closed it, Sierra. I'm sorry.
Can I just ask?
Go ahead, Renee.
No, I just wanted to see, how do we, let's decide to follow up on the Zone A versus Zone B piece. Would that come through, through Jim?
There's a map that's part of the ordinance, and there's a line of demarcation that's just a curved line that at some point in time, the powers that be carved out the delineation, and part of Deer Park is in A, or part of the residential area is in A and part is in B. It's something you could revisit.
I would recommend we do that.
So when we started the conversation, I sort of suggested that this ordinance and its application was, had concerns, had problems. And so Bob and the other commenters, I would suggest that, and I would suggest to the council members, that we should be able to get a little bandwidth around here in the near future to address this problem, from top to bottom, with the collaboration of the chief, Bob as the spokesperson for the neighborhood, and certainly we want to bring Mike Guerengelli into the process as well. And I would say that we should be able to clear some space to do that in conversation with the manager toward the earlier part, first half of next year. And I realize that gives cold comfort to you folks, but we're trying to be responsive to the fact that we have ancient writings, clearly ineffective, but two valuable folks who are in conflict with one another, just as we have been in other situations, and we're going to try to find that middle ground. I don't know that we'll get there. I really don't in this one. This, as the chief said, is very tough. is, is very tough, but that is my recommendation to the council, after talking to the manager about it, and I welcome your thoughts.
I mean, I, I think we, we have our priorities right now that we need to get through, I think it's worth opening a conversation with Deer Park Villa. He had Henry Freuenberg, I think, made an appearance here for him last time, it might be worth having the manager give Henry a call and kind of fill him in on the discussion, and see how they feel about making some simple but clear modifications to the existing ordinance, maybe about the timeframes, that type of thing, so that we could at least open a conversation sooner than six months from now, if we could, just to kind of take their temperature about getting to that middle where there's some improvement for, for the neighborhood, so, that's, that's what I would recommend.
Sounds good, any other thoughts?
Yeah, it's, it's a conundrum, because the sound is clearly irritating, I mean, I, I live over by the library, as we heard, that's the quiet section, I enjoy living in the quieter section, I've heard complaints about other, you know, things are getting noisy, you know, I mean, backup beepers for a start, I mean, didn't really, when they wrote this ordinance, you didn't have all these trucks backing up forever, and you can hear that a mile away from places. It's a really hard thing to regulate, because everything is getting noisier and noisier, and you're just, you know, keeping up the volume, just to, and as a result, people can't hear themselves think. I think it's definitely worth looking at, you know, that line between A and B to see, you know, also, you know, look at, at the process where that line got drawn, it, it seems kind of arbitrary for, to us right now, you know, having that line there, but it clearly, it, it just clearly doesn't work, and I think, you know, sound mitigation is the only thing that I can imagine, obviously, it would be nice to have a clear ordinance, personally, I think this is pretty clear, especially if other places are modeling it on us, but in a practical sense, regardless of how clear the ordinance is, it's a problem for people, and so if it's a problem for people, we should deal with the problem in whatever way we can, and to me, sound mitigation, meaning sound walls and keeping reflected stuff down, or limiting the hours at which it can happen, yeah, might be another approach, but, you know, obviously, that has business consequences too.
All right, with that, Garrett, do you think you have direction appropriate from, from the council to move forward on a few steps as we look forward to a more comprehensive rewrite?
So, I do, is there a specific timeframe? Do you want me to report, I assume you want me to report back at a council meeting?
Yeah, why don't you come back to us no later than the October meeting? If you have something by September, by all means, let us know. If you have something by the September meeting, or whenever you have something, why don't you shoot Bob an email on this, so that he can inform the residents of how the council and the government is, is moving forward expeditiously? Okay, then? Please, and Sierra, you had your time to speak, we've closed the public hearing. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
First of all, I wanted to clarify the issue of, this would be arbitrarily, you know, this ordinance, this section of the ordinance would be arbitrarily applied to Deer Park Villa. What we're asking is that the ordinance that is a town, in the town code, be applied to the entire town, the last thing we want is arbitrary treatment towards Deer Park Villa. We think that this is an ordinance that should be applied throughout the entire town of Fairfax, so, we do not believe that this is being arbitrary. Also, I agree with you, John, that I think is very clearly written, I don't, in fact, well, before I ask this question, I wanted to say, Larry, that I support the idea, the possibility of defining daytime until eight o'clock rather than ten, that makes a lot of sense. The fact that one side of the street of Portius is called multiple, multiple dwelling, is that what it's called? And the other side of the street is called residential, makes no sense whatsoever, I think that is definitely something that the neighbors would support looking into. We thought that it would be a lot easier to ask merely to enforce the law rather than to change it. That is the basis of this petition, we are merely asking to enforce the law. These changes would be very, very welcome, and they could very well be the solution to the problem. I would like to, there are, there is a part of the petition that hasn't been addressed yet, and it, but first, I'd like to read something else, which I, which I briefly referred to before. Whenever any ordinance or part of an ordinance shall be repealed or modified by a subsequent ordinance, the ordinance or part of ordinance that is repealed or modified shall continue in force until the ordinance repealing or modifying it becomes effective unless otherwise expressly provided. I believe that the town code tells us that we have to continue to enforce the correction for quality of sound while we're waiting for these other issues to be resolved. I think that's fairly clearly written.
And I think the chief said that he would continue enforcement as he has been enforcing.
But I believe that the, the ordinance as it is written does not allow for ignoring the, the changing of the standard, what is called correction for quality of sound. The town attorney, could you, I mean, is it out of place to ask for a clarification? Way back in January, I asked this, and then I was told to come back in February, and then February turned out to be a circus, so it never really got addressed. I, I think this is clearly written, I think that there are three lawyers present, if not more, in this room, and I find it difficult to believe that I'm one of the few people who is able to read this, as I said, I mean, understand this as clearly as, as it is to me, I understand that this is my opinion, but is there ambiguity about whether or not this, there's any discretion in enforcing this or not?
You know, Bob, you know, usually, I'm in a room with attorneys all the time, and I frequently find that the only smart people are not the attorneys, but the one thing I don't want to do here is put our town attorney on the spot to give a legal opinion, for which she hasn't had the proper amount of time to consider.
I understand, I understand. And so, I would like, so the timeframe is that Garrett is going to get back to me as soon as possible, otherwise, it is going, something is going to be presented for the October meeting concerning exactly what?
Okay, let me try to frame this, so that staff and you have an idea of what's going on. What I'm hoping we can do is, per some of the suggestions Larry has made, to reach out to Mike Guirangelli's attorney, and open up a conversation, hopefully it can be happening in the short term rather than the long term, but sometimes, all gets being what it is, it's tough to reach folks during the vacation season, so if not, it'll be certainly by October. At that point, it'll give time for staff, town attorney, and the chief to take a harder look at the ordinance, as well as what's in the general plan, as newly adopted, and come to some recommendations as to how we want to, if we want to, change it. And I'm hoping that we will wrap that process up, as I said, by the middle of next year, as you know, and as you can see from the folks behind you, our limited staff has a very full plate of stuff, but, again, I'm, I'm sort of promising that we'll get to this, you know, no later than sort of the beginning of, of next year.
The one point of the petition that hasn't been addressed is basically, why in the world, it addresses, why in the world we are talking about sound readings and the staff being occupied and all this? A, a, a police officer can, I should say, for example, that one of the reasons, as, as Police Chief Moran mentioned, that in many cases, when there has been a noise complaint, by the time the officers arrive, it is already after ten o'clock, often the dispatch will call and say, we finally have an officer who's free, it's after ten o'clock, do you still want him to come out? And I would say, no. Officers have other things to attend to, so it, I mean, this is only one of many different things that, that police have to deal with. Many of the noise complaints have not been addressed because of that, and there's no fault in anybody because of that, that's just the nature of things. But why is it that decibel readings, which take up so much of the police force's time, as I think was expressed, that it could, it could take an entire hour just for what is a fifteen-minute reading, and then the officers have to come back at ten o'clock and do an ambient reading, and I was told by one, I could be mistaken, but I under, if I understood correctly, that they're not supposed to leave the property of the complainant in the, in the meantime. That means that if there is a reading at eight-thirty, the officer is basically occupied until ten-thirty, and one noise complaint, does this happen when there is a noise complaint about a party at a residence? Does this happen when there's a noise complaint about, about music at Nineteen Broadway? Why does this only happen at Deer Park Villa? That's something that I think has to be addressed also. Part of the petition asks that the town policy be to treat all noise complaints the same, meaning that if there is a complaint about noise, that the police appear in person and notify the, the, the party that there has been a complaint. Deer Park Villa, if I understand correctly, is the only business that insists on limiting police presence to what they, to the criteria that they have established themselves.
Let me just end this conversation with a point that I've been thinking about over the many months since you and I first talked about this almost a year ago, which is, we're trying to solve a problem by employing the noise ordinance. I don't think that that's the best way we're going to reach resolution of this dispute, it's an inartful approach to resolution of, of this matter. So while we will work on this to change it, if necessary, in conversation with, with you folks, in the community, and with staff, what I'm looking for is a, the same sort of solution which got us past the concern with the Good Earth and their backing up trucks and early deliveries and things like that. I think there has to be, in these type of disputes, a, a, a meeting of the minds between folks on both sides of the issue that come together, because I think that this hyper-technical fix is just, in my opinion, it's just not going to work, it's not going to bring peace. So what I'm hoping to do over the next couple of months is see if we can tinker with the ordinance as much as necessary, or rewrite as much as necessary, but also, I think we really have to address the bigger issue, which I think Renee and, and John are kind of getting at, which is the, the physical fixes on the property and what can be done, but let's, let's leave it there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number eleven, is the second reading by title-only adoption of ordinance seven-eighty. Garrett, you want to take the conversation from the top?
Sure. As you know, the council has discussed this topic at numerous public meetings, you have considered hours of public testimony on the topic, and so I'm not really going to go into the history of why we got here. Where I'll start is I'll start at July sixteenth council meeting. So at July sixteenth council meeting, the council was considering the repeal of ordinance seven-seven-eight. At that time, the council made changes to ordinance seven-eighty, which was going to repeal seven-seven-eight. Staff was enabled to make those revisions at the meeting, and so the council scheduled a second, special meeting on July twenty-fourth. At that meeting, the council actually introduced ordinance seven-eighty to repeal ordinance seven-seven-eight. So I think, based on the plethora of emails that the council and staff has received, I think there's some things I really need to clarify what ordinance seven-eighty does and what it doesn't do. So what ordinance seven-eighty does, first of all, is, in order to repeal an ordinance, you have to adopt an ordinance. I, I know that sounds confusing, but that's how it works. And so what seven-eighty does, it's to repeal ordinance seven-seven-eight, and in essence, with the repeal of ordinance seven-seven-eight, it makes it so that ordinance seven-seven-eight was never in existence. Zoning map, zoning code, all goes back to the way it was prior to the ordinance, and I would point people to the town code online, because we never revised it for ordinance seven-seven-eight, so what's there now is what's there before. So nothing was changed. What seven-eighty does, and yes, seven-eighty does have some whereas's, and seven-eighty makes some findings, but ordinance seven-eighty does not change a general plan, it does not change the housing element, it does not implement any general plan housing amendment policies, nor does it implement any zoning code text. What it does is, it just eliminates ordinance seven-seven-eight, and so, that's just sort of a best way to describe actually what ordinance seven-eighty does. Again, it's just an ordinance you have to adopt in order to repeal an ordinance. So, that being said, I thought what might be helpful is to just share with maybe what the next steps the council had talked about on the sixteenth. And really, as the community knows, the council had a workshop attended by approximately two-hundred people on July twelfth to talk about the issues raised in, in relationship to ordinance seven-seven-eight. Based on that workshop, also at the council meeting of July sixteenth, the council talked about the proposed actions that it'd like to undertake to address all those specific issues of ordinance seven-seven-eight. And a great example of that is the planning commission in August, I think it's August twenty-first, will actually be considering a general plan amendment to amend Jehovah Witness property, which was inadvertently included in the general plan map as PDD, and change it to UR-seven. That will then match the zoning that it's going back to of UR-seven, which is one unit per seven acres, so the general plan and zoning map matches. In addition, we're also taking all the table corrections as a general plan amendment, and that's going to the planning commission in August. But I think what that demonstrates is, it really demonstrates that the council has listened to the committee, heard its concerns, and while maybe there's disagreement over what's a mistake, what's a typo, what's an error, the council is taking action to correct those steps, and there's a whole series of actions, and I actually think the council has taken the extra step of really stepping back and saying, okay, let's go through this process again, and what we're going to do is, we're going to hold some workshops. One workshop will be on Teneleem School Tree Plaza, to be able to engage the community, as I indicated, our last meeting was engage the community in a dialogue, let's educate, let's inform, let's hear the comments, and let's have a discussion on the issues. And so, really, again, you're repealing it, and then you're sort of starting over with allowing opportunity for people to comment. And I think what I said last time, is I said, trust the process, but what I think now is, I'm asking people, when they participate in the process, because I'm encouraging everyone to participate, so they can hear firsthand, for themselves, what the issues are. Two is, I'm asking people to be respectful of the opinions they hear, because it's going to be clear that people are going to disagree on the issues, and I'm asking them to respect the process, because I think a tendency that we may have is that if we don't respect the process, then what's going to happen is, we aren't going to listen, and if we don't listen, it becomes a one-way conversation. In my experience, one-way conversations lend itself to being very unproductive in a discussion. But that being said, those are my editorial comments of moving forward, what we're recommending is that you adopt, you waive the second reading and read by title only, ordinance seven-eighty in ordinance of the town council, town of Fairfax, to repeal ordinance number seven-seven-eight, and adopt ordinance number seven-eighty. Now, as a clarification, it was pointed out, out to us, there's a typo in the ordinance, and so, and when you adopt the ordinance, what we would do is, in section three, the last sentence, section three, should actually say, phrases be declared invalid or unconstitutional. So we left out the in in front of the valid, so it's invalid or unconstitutional, and that's just the one minor change. Another point in order is that, if the council should decide and wants to make significant changes to the ordinance, in essence, this would turn into the first reading, your second reading then would happen in September, which would delay everything by thirty days. So, with the adoption of this ordinance, then it takes effect in thirty days, which would be September fifth. So with that, that concludes the staff report.
Questions of Garrett?
Um, I do. Garrett, could I just ask you to, one more time, repeat very slowly and very clearly exactly what the planning commission's going to do on the twenty-first of August? So that, because a lot of questions come when, well, if there's mistakes and they say they're going to fix them, why didn't they fix them? So let's, let's find, let, let's just be super clear exactly what will happen and what's coming before the planning commission.
So, what's coming to the planning commission on August thirty-first, or a series of, is a general plan amendment, which is one of the first steps. And what we'll be doing is, we'll be amending the general plan amendment as it relates to Jehovah Witness property. Currently, it's listed as PDD on the general plan map, that's incorrect, it should be UR-seven, it's going to go to UR-seven, to match the zoning of UR-seven. The second action within that general plan amendment is the tables we had referred to at the previous meetings, the tables governing the densities for UR-seven, UR-ten, it incorrectly listed those densities, and so we'll be correcting those densities. There's some other things in terms of lettering for residential zones, we'll be correcting that also. So, it's a comprehensive approach for that first step, to address those concerns. Now, there's other steps the council's directed staff to undertake, but that's the first step. Ultimately, what will happen is, planning commission makes a recommendation, and then it'll go to, to the council for approval at a public hearing.
So, not to drive this horse too hard here, but I, I do want to make sure that when we've talked about, and generally, people have heard- we've talked about, and generally people have heard, well, there are mistakes, and there are errata, and there are typos, and for whatever reason, all of them will be brought to the planning commission to be taken care of? Or are there, is there a next step of things that we need to bring to correct?
There, there are other actions that we had indicated we would take to the council, but that's not included within these steps. Part of it is, we had talked about the church property being PDD. The problem was, the reason we're not doing that right now is, we don't know where the two acres exactly is going to be. So you, if we were to take it, we'd have to take it all out, PDD, back to original. They come with two acres. We'd have to go back and amend the general plan, so it makes sense to do that all at the same time. The zoning, design, everything all at the same time. That's just example for the church. So there's different steps. Plus, we indicated the council would do workshops for Teneleem and School Street Plaza, so we're not doing anything with those until after you have the workshops.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
In addition to the, the corrections you, you mentioned of the density and the, the mis-zoning of the, of one parcel, there were a number of other corrections that were going to be made. Will those be included for the planning commission?
Correct. All the table corrections, those will be included.
Okay. And, and the one thing I, I mentioned to you and to Planning Director, part, some of the tables are, are confusing because they, they have density, they do the density calculations for both the UR10 and UR7. And those should, I, I think should really be done separately so that you don't have any ambiguity about the densities.
So we're, we're going to do that also. Sorry, I should have pointed that out. We'll, we'll separate, UR7 will be whatever, 1.14 units per acre, UR10 is...
Point one.
Point one.
So just list them separately.
Yeah. And it's, as Jim Moore is pointing out, that when it actually, the planning commission makes a recommendation, but when it comes to the council, you can always do additional changes.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, time for public comment. Please step up, two minutes, and, good evening, Jessica.
Jessica Green, live in, on Ridgeway in Fairfax. It seems, you know, you talked about how much money it costs of litigation with this ordinance. Well, we, we, we had a petition, we had a thousand signatures, and people signed it, not because they were against low-income housing, you know, but they were against a lot of the building. And, you know, I mean, there was sort of general support for the Lutheran Church for certain things, but, you know, it seems like this new ordinance has like manipulated the words, given us very similar projects in some ways, maybe not all of them. It seems like, it seems like you could have just rescinded the ordinance, you would have saved that $33,000 on legal fees, and we could have started fresh. I think that we have to think of a democratic, democracy here, you know, and I think if it had been put on the ballot, then the people of Fairfax could decide what they really want. And I think the truth is that probably at least maybe two-thirds of Fairfax, if they don't read the IJ, don't even know about all this planned building going on or that's proposed. And I think that would be the democratic way to go. I feel like this is being very carefully manipulated, that these, these workshops were kind of, it sounds like nice that we're all going to put in our opinion, but I think they were really kind of designed to justify what certain council members want to push this thing through, so they're putting out their case for the first, you know, hour and a half, two hours of the workshop. It just doesn't seem fair. It seems like we, we had a petition, a lot of people signed it, it could have been rescinded, you could have saved all those legal fees, and we could, you know, still work with low-income housing and figure it out thing by thing, but you, you know, anyway, I, I, it just doesn't feel good to me how things are going, even though we're getting, we're going, you know, we, we made a little progress, but I feel at the same time, it's not like winning the case isn't here. It's, it's, it's figuring out democratically what all the people of Fairfax want or don't want, and that's why it should have been on the ballot. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Jessica. Next.
Valerie Hood, 79 Domingo, Fairfax. I'm concerned with the wording in the new ordinance to repeal an ordinance. I'm not convinced that it does that yet, and so I'm looking forward to the discussion tonight. Which would have been a clear-cut decision to follow the referendum, taking a break for a year. Instead, the new ordinance seemed very, seems very like, in some ways, what was repealed. For instance, second paragraph, quote, "moving forward with appropriate rezoning acts." The point of the referendum was to stop the rezoning of Fairfax, and that's perhaps the most vital point of the referendum. So to put it on the repeal ordinance makes no sense to me whatsoever. Section C refi's, refers to typographical errors. Again, it's hard to believe that all errors would result in upping the density of all properties, and we still have not been told who made these errors and if there was any consequences for those. Section B, conduct community outreach. This is very, I'm very uncomfortable with this part. Because they, it's being asked that it be conducted by the planning commission. At all the meetings I have attended, they have shown their prejudice for the density planning and not for fair hearings about affordable housing, and I believe that their definitions do not reflect the feeling of the majority of Fairfax residents, and I think that a different group needs to be in charge of any future meetings about housing, or fair housing, or affordable housing, or however you want to call it. Then, we have been repeatedly told that there was no rezoning of the Wild property, yet in paragraph, in part C, second paragraph, it acknowledges that changes to these properties did occur. Now, those accusations were made in the press, they were made in hearings, and so I think it's time to clear the record on that. Section D, this is the first, this is not the first I've heard, but the last meeting that was unfortunately scheduled in the middle of the day, was, was the first time I'd heard about homeless shelters. Now, since then, I've spoken to Barbara Kohler about this, as she acknowledged at that meeting that it came from her, and her reasoning made sense to me, and I'd really like her to share it with residents. I look forward to hearing that. But I do have a problem with shelters in the plural sense. This is a topic that I feel that should have been addressed in public debate before it was included in an ordinance, although I do understand the reasoning behind it. I think that in order to come to some kind of a consensus about the huge homeless problem that we do have in Fairfax, they live in the creek behind my house, they live up in the hills in Oak Manor, they live in Deer Park, I know a number of them, some of them are, I consider friends, others I don't really know, but I'm seeing more and more people all the time. I've had to call the police on several occasions when there were people who were trying to camp in my neighbor's backyard, for instance, and they raised a fuss when they were told that that was just not going to happen. And we have people camping out almost nightly now, in the creek, down at the end of Pacheco, and there's a lot of human waste again, and they, these people, they do need facilities, they need help, there's no question about that. I, I'm seeing this all over the country. I know it's not just, just here. I'm so glad that there's food pantry, and I thank you so much for, for putting that together. That's a huge thing. But it's, I think it's going to be a drop in the bucket for what's going to be required of us, and I think to be good neighbors, we really need to, to look at this as a community and figure out ways to make people not afraid of it, because so much negative press all the time coming out of Santa Fe, it just certainly hasn't been handled very well, at least in the press. So we need to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvette?
Can I just respond?
Please.
So, and excuse me for, I apologize for providing any confusion, but the first version of this ordinance that we saw a couple times ago did not have an extensive number of findings, in my mind, that really supported the repeal of the ordinance. So what I did is I went through the general plan, which included the housing element, to find any policies or principles that showed that repealing ordinance 778 would be appropriate and would be in conformance with the general plan. So regarding section D, which you brought up, Valerie, which talks about housing opportunities for the town's residents with special needs, including 40 units of senior housing, 22 units of workforce housing, and identify appropriate zones for homeless shelters. That specifically comes right out of the general plan in the housing element. That's one of the objectives. And you, so what I was pointing out was because the general plan, or because the ordinance inappropriately rezoned the Jehovah's Witness, it wasn't consistent with this. Now, you can't lop off part of a whole objective, so this ordinance is not specifically bringing, what this is doing is bringing up findings that support the repeal of ordinance 778. And so this is part of that objective. But 778 didn't speak to homeless shelters. This is just an objective that's brought in, and it's really focusing on the senior housing and the workforce housing. So I hope that clarifies things, but I apologize for any confusion.
Okay, before Yvette speaks, could you throw on the fan over here, because it's becoming a little hot up here? Yvette, please.
Yes. Yvette Wakefield, 23 Alhambra Circle. I too thought that if you were going to rescind 788, you should just, or 778, you should just do it, just rescind it. I didn't see the necessity of doing it with the wording that you did it with. Now that I know the general plan can be amended, I would like to do some amending myself. I want to find out about this general plan and see what it's really saying. All this development that you want to approve is not good. It's all really a bad idea. It's bad just to have that development. It's not going to help any of the low-income people who need homes. It's not going to help me. Jim Moore was, you know, mentioned my name, you know, and is telling us all these low rents that are going to be over there, as though I'm going to be able to take advantage of it? No. The Marin IJ reiterated that it's going to be for people with incomes between $24,000 and $40,000, and I'm not in there. So I would like to ask you to please really address the issue of housing for people, for low-income people, for poor people, because there are a lot of us, and we're not all out on the street. But I don't have a home myself, and that's really hard on me. It's hard on me, and it's hard on my cat, and it's hard on my family. And I think you should do other things to find affordable housing for people, like have rent control, find some financing for people to fix up their second unit so they can have legal units to rent out, find other locations that are not near busy streets, which are just going to make people sick, find healthy locations for people to live. And I know that these matters are also supposed, also supposed to be addressed in the general plan, because I've been studying real estate this summer to see if I can change what's going on with my real estate, and I'm learning about this. And apparently, every city in town is supposed to have this general plan, and it mentions all the things. That's how I found out about the noise matter. But Larry, I can't stay late for the matter. I got the signatures for the thing about the, the moratorium on rent increases for a year. I can't stay up that late. I'm sorry. If you guys had meetings during the day, I could stay for the whole thing, but I'm, I just get too tired. But thank you, and I hope that we can do something good, and not, you know, not something manipulated and insincere and untrue. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvette. Jim?
Jim Rice, 192 Laurel Drive. Some of this, if you looked at the letter Mary Jo and I sent, you'll recognize what I'm going to say, and then some other things are added. The intention of the petitions that Fairfax residents signed to repeal ordinance 778 was not merely to correct typos and mistakes. The intention was to lower the housing density proposals that threatened to dramatically alter sustainability and quality of life here in Fairfax. We strongly urge you to not pass another ordinance that would make only minor changes to the overall density proposals of ordinance 778. Instead, we recommend setting density numbers after plans are reviewed in the preliminary plan stage, not before the public has had time to see exactly what is proposed. Additionally, before density limits are considered for future projects in the incorporated part of Fairfax, it appears essential to know what the County of Marin's specific rezoning plans are for the unincorporated areas of Fairfax. Certainly, the density issue must include a comprehensive approach that considers traffic, parking, water and other resource needs, infrastructure needs, and the total impact of each project on the quality of life in Fairfax. Ultimately, I would hope that you council members will come together on the density issue to solve it in ways that will meet the desires of Fairfax residents, and will also massage, educate, persuade, and eventually satisfy state and A-BAG requirements. Which leads me to this. Rather than creating workshops to convince Fairfax residents that we need to go ahead with rezoning in a way that satisfies current A-BAG and state requirements, I suggest that you conduct a workshop or workshops on strategies that are not oppositional, but that are reasonable, and that will educate and persuade and work with A-BAG and the state to recognize that what we will eventually recommend is reasonable and fair. Just look at the different strategies of Corder Medera and Larkspur. Corder Medera acted on A-BAG's figures, and they ended up with the Wind Cup complex. Larkspur rejected high-density for the Larkspur Landing Station area. Come on, Fairfax council members. You can work together to develop a strategy that persuades A-BAG and the state to accept our numbers. Finally, when circulating the petition to overturn ordinance 778, we observed a stunningly similar response from Fairfax residents to that we experienced when campaigning in 1998 to defeat Measure C. In that case, the town council approved rezoning to enable high-density housing at Marin Town and Country Club, which would have created traffic gridlock and a myriad of other problems. An overwhelming 77.9% of Fairfax voters rejected the rezoning measure once a public vote was taken. Even without the development, since that time, density problems have only worsened in town and beyond. We are once again certain that there would be resounding opposition to another ordinance that would include anywhere near the projected density figures that are identified in ordinance number 778. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I don't really have anything to say. I wanted to add to the last one, David, which was of the 130 sound complaints that have been made, Michelle told me there's been one citation, which, which is the point I wanted to make, like, if that's the case, something's wrong with the ordinance. If people are like having the sound and having a problem, and they're having an issue and making a complaint, and there's only one citation out of 130 complaints, something's wrong with the ordinance. It's not, anyway. As for building density, I've got another take, as I usually do. And it comes down to all of this, basically. We're all consumers, we're all buying things and throwing them away and kind of devouring this planet, and what are we leaving behind? It's like, what are we doing to the air? What are we doing to the water? What are we doing to the soil? It's like, yeah, there's cars around, there's density. Why don't we just rip up most of the pavement and start building really big skyscrapers where we can all live? Leave the rest of the ground soil where the water can go into it, and where we can grow food, or do other things? And then you get into private property and income and all of our stuff, and, you know, the system's rigged, and there's only so much private property. Look at Israel, look at the Gaza, look at all of us fighting over a scrap of land in whatever we believe, whether we say salam or shalom. Are we going to shoot each other? Are we going to take care of each other? It's like, thank you guys for doing what you can, thank the rest of us for doing what we all can, and we're still all consumers. Quit consuming. Quit buying crap. It's like, we make this world with every waking dollar, we're buying crap, and it's all going into landfill, and it's all coming from living environments. What are we doing about that? How much plastic and, what do you throw away every week? What's in your trash can? How much stuff do we toss? It's not them, it's... It's not them, it's not them, it's us. It's like, we want to have a planet worth living on, let's change our lifestyles.
Thank you, Sierra. Next speaker. Sir?
What I want to talk about is the issue of the typos and the cloud of suspicion that lingers about this issue of these typos. Now, being in the private sector, we would call these typos shoddy product. And given such a shoddy product, I would expect the Board of Directors of any corporation to exercise that demand for a remedy and call upon the consultants to refund all the payments that were made and perhaps even some extra payments for damages, given all the consequences that have ushered out of these, quote, "typos." And the fact that this has not been done leads me to have the suspicion that there is a reason it's not being asked for, because perhaps these typos were not accidental. The typos of this sort and their bias has been expressed by other speakers indicates that they have a high degree of likelihood of being purposeful typos that opened the door, and I have to thank the people in the petition who read this document and discovered these errors. But I think that until you are willing to get your city attorney to issue a demand to these consultants for a refund, that this cloud is going to sick over this city council and over this city. And if your city attorney is unwilling to do it, what my father, the Colonel, would have done, he would have demoted the person and promoted somebody who had the willingness to do what the business of this city is to do, which is to protect the interests of its people. And its people's interests right now are going to be best served to eliminate this cloud by demanding, formally demanding, a refund for this shoddy product that was delivered to the city that put this city in such grave danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good evening.
My name is Christopher McManus. I'm a lifelong resident of Marin County, and I am a five-year resident of Fairfax. I stand here in support of the wording of Ordinance 780. I feel it is important to keep an open door on the general plan and the housing element. And there are many reasons for this. I support the effort to correct the mistakes in the general plan. In my understanding, even though there is no record of one of the regional or state agencies actually imposing sanctions for noncompliance with RENA, I do not believe that this should be the only consideration. I would suggest there are other considerations, which may -- which will make it prudent to pass Ordinance 780 as it is. One consideration may be the enforcement of the 1986 Fair Housing Act. Housing, for example, housing in Irman Development just settled recently with Westchester County for the sum of $64 million. Not providing -- in the decision, they said that not providing affordable housing, in this ruling, not providing affordable housing becomes an impediment to the fair housing choice. Our supervisor from Nevada, Judy Arnold, pointed this out recently. She feels that municipalities such as ours, our town, are traveling down the same road if we do not provide. But it's not for this reason alone that I support Ordinance 780 as it is written, but I find this to be a very compelling argument. And I would like to thank the council for scheduling the Town Council Workshop and Forum regarding the Tennelema Workforce Housing and the School Street Plaza on Wednesday, September 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to check on that date. Is it the 17th or the 16th? The 17 -- it's on the 17th. It's going to be between 6:00 and 8:00, as I recall. Am I correct, Garrett?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Wednesday, the 17th, between 6:00 and 8:00. Bruce?
Bruce Ackerman, 17 Valley. I wanted to thank the council members for your patience and -- I wanted to thank the council members and the mayor for your patience in navigating this difficult terrain that we've been going through and your continued support of us not dividing the community any more than it's already been divided and to try to bring us together to make decisions about where we want to go within our town. And I do support the language in Ordinance 780. I believe it should be passed as it is, and for the reasons that Councilwoman Koller stated, that we actually need the findings in order to support why we're making this action, has to be in conjunction with the general plan. 778 was hurriedly put together, and that's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that there's a lot of distrust just under the surface of the community, apparently, that has been brought up by the errors that were created, and that's, we're going to fix the errors. I hope we can somehow get past the distrust, because that's the real core issue, is whether we trust each other, whether we trust the process that has, for many years, created the general plan and created the opportunity sites that we've identified. Indeed, I do believe in planning. I do not believe in taking applications for development in the town on a piecemeal basis. The purpose of planning is to step back and take a larger view, a longer-term view of where we're going. And that's just what the general plan does, and I think it does it well. It actually protects the town from having something like the Chevron application coming in and just finding a place where there's an opportunity to do something and where the letter of the law doesn't prevent it, and there it is. There's nothing you can do about it. That is the purpose of the general plan, is to actually put down in writing what it is that we believe as a town. And I believe the general plan does that. So there's the plan, then the ordinances take -- add more specificity to it, and then actual applications get into the details for those applications. So there's a reason for each of those three steps, and I don't think we should throw out the concept of planning and try to replace it with something that's taking things as they go and having no plan. Thank you.
Wendy?
Okay. Thank you. Wendy Callens, I live in Forest Knowles. I work at 733 Center Boulevard in Fairfax. First, I want to express my appreciation to the council and to the staff for patiently working through this process. While I don't necessarily support the repeal, I do believe that the compromise that has been -- the council has reached with the wording satisfies the need to correct the errors and inconsistencies in the general plan. And I will remind that the referendum was actually, when it was circulated, was telling people that hundreds of properties and hundreds of housing was coming to Fairfax based on those errors and inconsistencies. And so I think that repealing the ordinance will make it clear to everybody what, in fact, is the intent of the housing element and the general plan. I want to reiterate my support for your housing element. It is time we put an end to suburban sprawl, not just in Marin, but throughout the Bay Area and beyond. This plan is for future generations. My generation may be set in their ways, but if you look at the younger generation, their preference is to live in communities that are walkable, bikeable, where shops and services are close enough to walk, and where transit is an option. In other words, they want to live in places just like Fairfax. Change might be hard to cope with, but change is already happening in Fairfax as we watch our beloved town gentrify. Like it or not, the law of supply and demand rules the day, and the only way we can stabilize housing is to increase supply. And this has done this in a very modest way. Fairfax has done this right. By locating housing opportunities primarily near the downtown, it has made sure that our open space is protected and that new housing fits with the character of the town. Change is always hard, but as the saying goes, the only thing constant is change. We can try to hold it back and then watch as it runs over us, or we can choose to shape that change, to take control and say to property owners and potential developers, this is where we want our housing, not up in the hills, not covering the open land, but infill and reuse of already built areas. This is green planning. You will find this in the Sierra Club platform, you will find it in the Green Party platform, and you'll find it throughout the country. This is what green planning is all about. I look forward to the future public workshops and hope that other people in the town can learn about why this kind of development holds the best opportunity to allow people to live in a way that conserves resources, lets them drive less, and lessens their carbon footprint. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Any other speakers? I was just thanking you for speaking. Other speakers? Shelley?
So Shelley Hamilton, 134 Canyon Road. Unlike other times when I've come up here talking against repealing the ordinance, I wanted to talk about appreciation and positive steps forward. And I wanted to say that I appreciate that you're working together, Barbara especially, coming up with that language that is much needed, and to come up with a solution that is appropriately justified, because that's what we have to do, and a solution that is well-considered and reflects the sentiments that you have been expressing over the past six months. I appreciate your integrity and transparency and willingness to work through a process to address and fix errors, and I'm happy to refund my portion of the volunteer free labor that I contributed to the document. And to pause and listen, I appreciate that we have finally come to a point where we can now openly and directly discuss the real core issues at hand and together. And we may not agree with each other, and we may not like, and we may just come to some disagreement, but we can at least talk about those core issues. And the Bioneers Conference is coming up. And so in talking about those core issues, it's really talking about what's the world that you and I want to create? And I'm reading from the Bioneers pamphlet, because I believe that this speaks to the spirit of going forward in a positive, creative, innovative way. So what is the world that you and I want to create? How are you and I helping the world and Fairfax get there together? How can we make a difference that really makes a difference? Not just, and this is my editorializing now, not just for my interests or the interests of the small group of folks that show up here all of the time, but for everyone, not just in Fairfax, but in the county, in our state, and in the world? And not just for now, but for generations to come. And finally, I appreciate your authentic quest for common ground. You have shown that time and time again, because finding common ground through an authentic, open process is truly the core of our democracy. So thank you, and I'm feeling appreciative.
Thank you, Shelley. Next. Good evening, ma'am.
Hello. I bow to all of the articulate speakers.
You got to look --
I bow to all the articulate speakers before me. Okay, down, okay. I bow to all the articulate speakers before me. Okay. I've been told that my presentations are a little bit emotional, but I think, you know, that's okay. And what I'm here for today, and I realize that there is going to be a workshop or meeting or forum, whatever you call it, on September 17th for School Street. But I would like to say what I'm objecting to is calling it School Street as if it were just an empty space waiting to be filled. It's not empty. There are a number of businesses that have been there for years, businesses that have been built and rebuilt. There is a number of jobs, massage therapists who provide sanctuary for hundreds of people in Fairfax, in the Marin County and elsewhere. It's a healing sanctuary, and that is in School Street Plaza. That's one of the things that is happening there. And I object to it being called School Street or School Street Plaza, as if it were nothing happening there. There is lots of things happening there. People live there, people work there. So the way I've been thinking about this thing all week and the number of weeks that I've been involved in coming and listening and speaking is, I hear that the powers that be want to come and replace what's there with housing and not necessarily low-cost or senior housing, from what I've gathered. The landlord that owns that property is not going to do low-cost or senior housing. So I'm getting that this is going to be people, I'm only gathering from all the information that has been disseminated, that's $50,000 to $100,000 their income that will come there. So what I'm seeing is you're going to, you want to replace people who make more money, make more money, come live there, destroy what's there, the dust, the construction, change it all, and then put the people who work and live there in School Street Plaza out somewhere else. I don't get it. I don't get the exchange. It does not make sense to me. I don't like it. I object to it. I work there. I'm nourished there. I nourish other people in this plaza, in this School Street Plaza that you call a School Street Plaza. It's a place that people work and live already, and I don't think it's necessary to bring in more people to live there. It'll destroy what's there already. So I just wanted to say that, representing the people who work and live there. We don't want to be replaced by other people. We're already there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Frank Agar, 13 Men Way. Our Town Council has held 10 closed sessions to discuss the referendum, subsequent litigation at Ordinance Number 780, which is supposedly drafted to repeal Ordinance Number 778, the subject of the referendum. The Brown Act does not allow the Town Council to meet in secret to wordsmith any ordinance, be it subject to litigation or not. The referendum law gives a town two options: repeal Ordinance 778 cleanly or place Ordinance Number 778 on the November ballot. A conditional repeal is not an option. Ordinance Number 780 directs the town to restart sections of Ordinance Number 778. Section 4-10 states Ordinance Number 780 will not affect the town's plan to rezone for the provisions of senior housing, workforce housing, or homeless shelters. Ordinance Number 780 introduces a new subject, not previously listed in Ordinance Number 778, that is rezoning for homeless shelters. Ordinance Number 780 states it is correcting mistakes like the rezoning of the Jehovah's Witnesses' property. The Jehovah's Witnesses' property was rezoned for 98 units plus any density bonuses that might come out of that. That was not a mistake. That property was listed in Ordinance Number 778 three times by assessor parcel number, by address, and by the map, which according to Ordinance 778 is the supreme when it comes to verbiage versus the map. Also, we are told the upzoning of the Wall and Sky Ranch properties that increased their allowable densities was a typo. A typo is a slip of a finger from, say, the key with a 1 to a key with a 2. You kind of slip off You kind of slip off and hit a 2, but not changing the 1 to 2.5. We can accept a real typo as a mistake. I urge the town council to be straightforward and repeal ordinance number 780, because 780 starts the town down the same path as ordinance number 778, by directing portions of ordinance 778 to be brought back piecemeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is James Bidder, and I'm from Mill Valley, Southern Marin. Driving into town, I drove by Naves, and I remembered Ed Bocci, who was in my high school class, and remember slow dancing with my girlfriend at his house behind the theater. I'm a native of Marin. City councils, as long as I can remember, have been responsible for zoning. They've appointed members of planning commissions who are responsible in part for zoning and dealing with zoning issues. The times have changed. I saw this the other day, and I thought I'd come drive up here and read this. While historically city general plans have reflected land use preferences of the residents, recent changes in legislations have created a new dynamic with the state legislating land use in ways that usurp local government control. So when you say the state, you think of AB 32, SB 375, SB 1, which is coming, and then you might think about how all that legislation got drafted had had nothing to do with the public. They didn't ask for this. Then you think about the special interest groups that are responsible for this, and one comes to mind is the American Planning Association, Larkspur Landing. They did five thumbs down, but a comment from one of the council members was, "This document was very expensive." This is happening all over the state of California. The five of you, like every city council in the state, are listening to the consultants. It's what we have to do to abide by state laws. There are too many to mention, and I would hope that the five of you would take the time to explain to the public, what are those state laws, where they came from, and that you got elected to represent the residents of Fairfax, not special interest groups that you don't want to talk about that created these state laws. And finally, I heard the comment, the city manager, this is going on all the time, Susan Adams, Steve Kinsey, the entire Board of Supervisors lecturing the public, scolding the public about civility at these workshops. These workshops are not the kind of government that America was used to. They were created by the American Planning Association. They're called charrettes. They have pamphlets on them, they give classes on them. This was Plan Bay Area. They had the visioning sessions. People put the poker chips in. So the public needs to come and scold you and the American Planning Association for doing this to Fairfax, not only Fairfax, every city in Marin, every city in the Bay Area, and every city in California. Because if you were to add up what we're paying consultants to do, what you're very capable of doing here, you could put that money to unfunded pension plans, you could fix streets, you could build schools, you could have daycare programs, so...
Thank you.
I'm not seeing it happen, that one brave city council member is going to get up and say, "The emperor has no clothes."
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Lisa Blash. I live on Pacheco. I just have listened repeatedly, I guess, to people from Mill Valley come and scold us about our process, and I'd like to keep it our process and keep it here in Fairfax a little bit. I am a person that lives in Fairfax, and I'm very concerned about the future of the town, and also the way that this debate has sort of unrolled into being uncivil, and it's been hard on all of us in the community to actually get together and talk about what we want to see happen. I am grateful that we have a town council that I've sat in on for like about two years now, that really does take up these issues seriously. I'm really grateful for the breadth of knowledge that the town council and the staff bring to bear on these really important issues. I'm really happy about the commitment that has been brought to the spirit of having a general plan, honoring the hard work and vision that's gone into that, and the community investment that it represents. It really represents an investment of a huge amount of community time, and that's ongoing. I also want to thank you for what I think is a commitment to democratic process in more of the style of the Town Hall meeting, that we are really having a town council that's willing to listen to us, they're willing to make changes, and encourage a process by which we can develop an informed electorate, and I think an informed electorate is extremely important in making democracy happen. That is really important, because I think elected officials are too seldom take the time to provide a real forum for voter education on the difficult and complicated policy issues of our day. Too often, this education is left to politicians and partisan propaganda, and on the national level, this has really led to a polarized electorate incapable of coming together as a community to work out our collective fates. So our busy lives leave us a little bit too little time to read through the issues, often leading us to make snap judgments at the polls based on buzzwords and politics and personalities. So I want to applaud us for continuing to try to talk through these issues, and for coming together as a community, as we've done for months and months and months now, but I hope that we can come forward as a community and come up with a plan that works for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Scott?
Yeah. My name is Scott Valentino. I live in Deer Park. I've been... Pardon? Oh. There, yeah? Pick it up. There we go. Okay. Anyhow, I've kind of sat quietly over the last couple of months. I returned to town recently. I've lived here for 15 years, and I've just been sitting quietly, watching kind of what's happening. A lot has been talked about with regard to the character of Fairfax, and we don't want to lose Fairfax. And I began thinking about the things that I think are part of the character of Fairfax. And when I moved here 15 years ago, I'd been living in big cities, and I wanted to go to a small town, because, well, for one, I could walk everywhere I wanted to go, you know? But also, I wanted to have a deeper connection with people. I wanted to get to know my neighbors. I knew if I could see people on the street, we would be more respectful of each other. We didn't have the brutal anonymity of a large city, where you could treat anyone the way you wanted to, and you'd never see them again. So coming here to this town, I was thrilled to be here. I really enjoyed it, and I got involved and did a lot of volunteer work. And anyhow, I realized that the issue at hand, I think, Garrett, you said, you know, it's trusting the process, right? And I realized this is a really complex matter. I tried to read the general plan, tried to get my hands around, and I realized at some point I just have to defer to my elected officials, the people I voted for, to do the right thing. As a volunteer, I was one of the people that started Sustainable Fairfax. I served for eight years on the Fairfax Volunteer Board. I know how hard it is for people that might be on the Planning Commission or the G-PAC Committee to come up, volunteer their time, and put together something that, while imperfect, is a really great job. And it is clear to me that almost everyone that's worked on this has been a neighbor or has had an investment in the town, or it's been controlled by people who have an investment in the town. So again, it comes back to trust being, I think, what is the most important ingredient for any relationship and for things to go forward. So what I've seen is I've seen the staff, the town council, I've seen the Planning Commission people be really open to the concerns that we've had. You know, I've heard them be reasonable, even in the face of personal attacks, and it's impressed me. And I have said, "Wow, these people are kind of earning my trust." And so now I feel like we're being asked, "Who do we trust? Do we trust the people up there? Do we trust concerned citizens with a lot of experience?" And I, for one, want to say that, you know, I do want to trust in the process. I do want to trust that you elected officials are going to do a great job, that the Planning Commission has done a fantastic job, that all the people on the G-PAC have done a fantastic job to bring something really tremendous together, as Marianne Majori alluded to in her letter to the Marin Voice. And I just think that the plan identifies opportunity to use our creativity and imagination to resolve these problems, and that there are mechanisms, even if, you know, if we pass 780, that there are mechanisms for people who are concerned, you know, who are the watchdogs out there in our citizenry, to be able to catch it and use those mechanisms to make sure we catch problems before they become problems. So again, I'm just saying that I do hope that people can decide whether or not they can trust the people up there, the people on the Planning Commission, the people who have been part of G-PAC. You know, you've got to trust somebody, so who do you trust? Anyhow, I just want to thank you for your efforts and say that I am going to trust in the process, and I'm going to trust in you guys do the right thing. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Sure.
Next speaker.
I didn't obey the rules. My name is Jenny Kelly, and I live in Fairfax on Roker Drive. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Hannah?
Is this still on? Oh, great. I'm Hannah. I live on Porteous Avenue. Here we are again. Just want to come up and say that I really appreciate the great thought that's going into things, and just urge that affordable housing be a really high priority in every dimension that we can advocate for it. And also, just say that, you know, I think there's some debate here, there's a continuum of opinions about what type of development or no development would be appropriate for Fairfax, and I just want to say that I really feel that some additional development is really necessary. The level of growth is so miniscule as to be almost nonexistent. It's driving rents up. It's making it very difficult for families that are currently owners that might want to become renters. There's no movement or flexibility in this town. So for anybody that's having a hard time, which actually is just a growing number, because the statistics about what percentage of your income is going to housing costs just continue to go up in this direction, there's nowhere to move. There's no flexibility, there's no wiggle room here. So I want to say, you know, and for people my age and younger, I think this problem is even more severe. So for those of us who don't own our homes outright, or who don't know whether the people that we're renting from are going to need to sell that home for some reason, or whatever. So I just wanted to say that I really urge you to take action to allow for, like in the general plan, reasonable infill and growth that takes place in our inner corridor that is close to transit. Many people who live in town do not have cars, do use bicycles and transit to get around. Many of our workers come in with very long transit routes to get into town. Anything that we can do that would make it easier for people who work here to live here, that would, you know, allow for people to stay in their homes through junior units or second units. I'm unsure if I'm covering every point that I wanted to, but I think also rent control, whatever provisions we can make to make things easier for renters. There are so many people, I mean, I think it just needs to be said that every day it just feels like you hear about another person, it's another school family that has to leave, or it's somebody who's lived here for a long time, who just can't find a place. And the competition is really intense when you're trying to find someplace. So I just think it's really serious. And I did want to mention the Church Project. I know I'm out of time here, I'm sorry. I do think it's really important that we support affordable housing, that we support seniors in the community, and I think the Church Project is something that obviously needs action from the council in order to go forward, and so I would urge you to take that action. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Are there anybody else who would like to comment this evening? If not, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion among the council members. Anybody want to start off on this? Okay, hearing none. If there's no further conversation?
I'll start. I have a feeling there's some pent-up desire for maybe some of my colleagues to jump in, but... Okay, that's better. First of all, I think the ordinance tonight does what we're required to do under the Elections Code, which is to repeal in its entirety ordinance 778. That's what we're required to do, and that's what this ordinance does. Some of the findings were added as defense against litigation that was threatened against the town if it decided to repeal the ordinance, because if we did so, it was claimed that we would be in violation of our general plan, which would leave us vulnerable to a lawsuit from the other side. So the findings that have been added here have not been done to weaken the repeal, they've been done to defend the repeal. This is an unconditional repeal, and we're required to make an unconditional repeal, and that's what we're doing here tonight. And I think it would be a big mistake to start nitpicking this ordinance to death. We need to move on, and I really think the challenge that this town is facing is not what to do tonight, but what to do tomorrow after it's been repealed, and whether we really have the sincerity to move forward as a community to support the affordable housing sites that we have seemingly come to consensus about, or whether that's going to get nitpicked because we just don't trust ourselves enough to come together and make a vision of providing that type of housing equity a reality for this town. So I think the challenge is not tonight, it's going to be in the months that follow. That all being said, I don't think we would have been rezoning any of Fairfax had we not been obligated to do so under state law. And I think to ignore that reality and to call this a local, homegrown document really kind of is ignoring the forest for the trees. We did our best to negotiate with the state to create a document that does reflect our values. But this document and the general plan, and I'm not talking about ordinance 778, that's a whole separate issue, but I'm talking about the general plan. I mean, we went back and forth with the state to try to tweak what we were doing to get them to approve our general plan. I mean, that's just the process you go through with housing and community development in California, and it does invade the traditional province of local jurisdictions to do their own planning and zoning. I mean, there's just no doubt there's been a shift in legal authority in the state of California, and we're responding to it. And I think it's really kind of unfair to ignore that reality, just as much as it would be unfair to not credit the work of the volunteers on the General Plan Committee and the Planning Commission, and the town council, and the staff, who did their best to try to come up with a document that did reflect our community values within the framework we're given by the state. It's a compromise, and the vehicle we chose, that we created to enact those policies, was an imperfect vehicle. It really, and I'm talking about ordinance 778. I mean, I don't really want to go through an investigation of how the mistakes were made. I've said this in prior meetings. The documents that had the mistakes were reviewed by the General Plan Advisory Committee, by the Planning Commission, by the town council, and by staff. We all share in the responsibility for an imperfect document, and that's just where it's at. And we all need to take responsibility for not having seen it. It took a very practiced eye in the person of Frank Egger to find him, but find him he did, and they're there. And that's another reality that we need to deal with, and not to vilify somebody for having the intelligence and the perspicacity to have found it, but actually to thank and acknowledge that accomplishment, because had we not done that in five or 10 years, some other council would be dealing with some development proposal that really didn't comply with the vision that's in the general plan. And the can would have been kicked down the road, and nobody would have known about it, because that kind of stuff happens. So again, I think... would have known about it, because that kind of stuff happens. So, again, I think, I think the challenge is going to be what we do tomorrow. Just one, one final word here that just struck me as I was listening to the really compelling comments about the lack of affordable housing. We're coming out of one of the worst recessions we've had since the Great Depression in the 1930s. Housing, development, investment has all ground to a halt, ground to a halt until probably the last 12 months. I don't know if we're really in a recovery, but certainly I don't think it's disputable that as far as housing and developing, keeping up with demand, it hasn't. Now, that being said, why has the state of California imposed increasing housing quotas in spite of that economic reality? I don't know. I mean, that's bureaucracy. That's, that's what you're dealing with. You're not, we're in a little bit of a state of denial here. And I think you've got to look at the big picture. And the big picture is that, you know, we're behind. We were just coming out of a very bad economic situation. I don't really know if we're coming out of a bad economic situation, or we're just in the midst of another bubble that's getting inflated for the inevitable next crash and the next bailout. But I think that is just, just something to keep in mind about the greater picture and what we can really do as, as a local community. I said when I first got involved with the Affordable Housing Committee that we were going to build affordable housing, no matter whether the state of California approved how we did it. That was the homegrown idea. It wasn't to sort of blindly play or pay allegiance to zoning standards that are created in Sacramento in a one-size-fits-all fashion that is imposed on local communities. Infill development is great if you have sufficient infrastructure to support it. We've got a two-lane road that comes in and out of Fairfax. Whether that supports the infill that's proposed in the general plan, we're going to have to go through that. But we've got to deal with that reality. We've got to deal with the hand that we've been dealt. So I, I support passage of this ordinance tonight. It does comply with the Elections Code. It does repeal Ordinance 778 in its entirety. And I would move approval, move further reading, but of course, would love to hear the comments of my colleague. Other comments?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, sure. I'd go. Yeah, Larry, I couldn't say a number of things as eloquently as you have said there. And I think that, yes, 778 is the result of what happens when you try to move too fast. Basically, who could possibly have read all those details? It certainly wasn't the case that, you know, yes, there were lots of eyes on it. And then at the last minute, a lot of things got jammed together and we got a big thing, which I said at that time, and I'll say it again now, it was too much to swallow in one big chunk. And there were too many details to read in one, you know, one piece of, one ordinance. And I think really what we need to do as a community is slow down and chew it, you know, bite off people, pieces that we, size that we can chew and chew it carefully and come up with something that we agree on as a community as a way to solve our problems. I think that, you know, Jim Rice was saying, there are a lot of good creative solutions that we can have. One of the other things on our agenda tonight is something that I've talked about, Barbara, with, is she would like to be our A-Bag representative, 2A-Bag. And A-Bag is pretty much a top-down, you know, how they've behaved is a, is a top-down authority. But they are also seeing a lot of things fly back in their face from a number of communities around. And I think that I am hopeful in talking with other representatives to A-Bag from other communities, that they are sending out feelers to try to say, well, how can we do this in a way that doesn't fly back in our face? And so that, and part of that is listening to communities try to solve their own problems in their own way. And I have heard a number of good ideas here in Fairfax about how we can solve our, our housing things, problems with, in different creative ways, by doing, you know, different units inside of existing property, for instance. And I am hopeful that there's a way forward there also. Larry's statements on how 780 basically does reject, repeal 778 with a bunch of findings that give it some legal teeth, I think that's really exactly what we're talking about, to look at some of the findings that we have there, basically to back up the repeal of 778 in, so that it's defensible legally, is really what we're talking about. And that's what it does. I don't think there's anything nefarious or crafty in there. Basically, we have got a bunch of findings that give it some standing and make it a defensible repeal of 778. And so I also support that.
Any other comments this evening? Barbara?
I'd like to make a motion.
Larry made a motion, but we'll...
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading and read by title only Ordinance Number 780 and Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax to repeal Ordinance Number 778 and adopt Ordinance Number 780.
I'll second it.
Colib, and then Renee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not any opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Let's look at the agenda now and see what we're going to finish up. She, she did both in one. She did both in one. We're done. Can we, no, it's 10 o'clock, so we have to see what we're going to do and let people who might be interested in something that we're not going to take up head on their way home. So what we have left is 12 through 16. Garrett, talk to us about what has to be done.
So you need to do Item 12, because that has to designate authors for the arguments and rebuttals as it relates to renewal of Measure I. 13, it's pretty short, but you could continue that.
If it's short, we'll just do it.
And then 14, you need to put that in place just in the event SB 270 should ever be adopted.
And I know Barbara's thing is timely, because if we don't do it now...
Right. And that would be short. And then 16, I don't know if anyone's here to talk about Item 16.
Is there anybody here to talk about 16? Just two, two, three folks? That's, that's a longer conversation. I could see that we're going to be getting to that Jon Stewart time. Do we want to put this over, or do we want a slower conversation?
Could I just make a recommendation? We're going to have an Affordable Housing Committee meeting, I think, on September 24. And my thought was going to be that there's a lot to talk about in this thing, and it might be worth having the Affordable Housing Committee taking it up first to sort of present some findings maybe to the council. I mean, our meeting isn't until September 24, so why don't we just put it over to the September meeting?
Good for you.
You could, maybe an item, a suggestion. I think going to the Affordable Housing Committee makes great sense. You do have three people. I don't know if you just want to hear what they have to say briefly. Ultimately, I think in the long run, really, direction as staff, we would just look for a direction. Is the council thinking they're going to want to talk about this at some point in the future in greater detail? Then we know that that's going to be item most likely, I don't know, discussed next year. And then we could talk about, the county is talking about certain studies that they would do to look at tenant protections, one of which is rent control. We can always piggyback on that study and have it study Fairfax to provide you the back on really need. But that wouldn't preclude the Affordable Housing Committee from really discussing the issue at the same time.
So Mike, would you agree, Garrett, that it might be wise then to agendize this for October, following that late September meeting? And then you could get back to us, I know we've talked about it before, what the county is going to do and how Fairfax might avail itself of that county study. All right, if that's, we have consensus on that to bring it back in Octo... Ma'am?
Okay.
Whoa, 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 no, no. Come forward, please. And I think it is appropriate for somebody to comment now.
Sure, I think you could accept the three comments.
Yeah, I waited a long time.
You're right.
Okay. I'm Margaret Honey. I own property in Fairfax. And I'm concerned about this rent control issue. Now, is this affordable housing, rent control? This is not, Number 16 is not about affordable housing. It's rent control. Okay, and the moratorium. So when would this be discussed, the rent control?
I was thinking that the council would take the matter up again in October. There's apparently a committee, Affordable Housing Committee, that would explore this in their own way. Did you say the 24th? On September 24. Also, the manager and I have discussed the fact that the county is looking at this issue. And we're thinking that there might be an opportunity to avail ourselves of some of the work that the county might do on, on this issue. So there's a couple of pieces to the jigsaw puzzle that are coming together. And we're thinking here that the first Wednesday in October might be a good time to revisit this. Now, let me just say, you've patiently waited for all of this. What we usually do is take an item that's been carried over, and that would, to the greatest degree possible, go to the front part of the agenda, so that you're not sitting here again at O'Dark 100 waiting for us to discuss it.
Okay. On the September 24 meeting, is the public invited and to talk? Because there are a lot of things to be said about this. Okay?
And do we know where that meeting is going to be held?
Right now, both Larry and I are on that committee. There's other agenda items. I have asked that we try to have it in a room that's large perhaps here, because it is a topic, not just rent control, but affordable housing. It is a topic of interest to a lot of folks. So right now, we're looking for a room, and most likely it'll be here, but it could be elsewhere.
My guess, ma'am, is going to be, we're going to put it on the front page of our website.
I was just going to ask. It will be on the website.
Yes, Garrett? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Any other speakers on this issue, which we're thinking of taking off the agenda? Please, ma'am, yes.
I'll keep my comments very brief. My name is Gail Conley. I have a duplex here. I do not support any kind of rent control. I bought my duplex in 66, 1966. So over those years, I've seen many drastic increases in rents, and then long periods where there's no increase in rents. And overall, it's balanced out. And I hate to see people start now, start tinkering with this and interfering with the marketplace. Yes, rents are going up, but they didn't go up very much over the last 10 years. So there's a balance. We also have some forces outside of Fairfax that are making an impression on us. The Wind Cup is going to be opening up. Now, they are going to have almost 200 units there. That will take pressure off of Fairfax. Their affordable income units are pretty much unaffordable. I mean, they're, they're going to be getting high prices for those. The county at the meeting last Monday that you were at was proposing 10 large complexes. And I hope that the one they're proposing for Fairfax does not materialize. We've got to find another way to get affordable housing other than allowing huge complexes to come in, and then 20% of them are affordable. And then those affordable housing, once 20 people are picked to live in them, or however many numbers, they'll live there for the rest of their lives. It's not something where the workforce is going to be coming and, and new people joining, like the young officer today. Whoever moves into those will stay there. And perhaps their children will continue to live in them afterwards. It's very interesting, affordable housing and rent. The other point I wanted to make was, if you start tinkering with rent control, people who would be thinking about putting an extra unit in their house will not do it. In other words, you're going to be cutting off the best source that Fairfax has had for affordable housing. If you had a house here, you're thinking about putting a unit in, maybe one bedroom, small thing, you wouldn't do it, not facing rent control. So please, leave the market alone. It's worked over the last half century while I've been in Fairfax. It's done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Liesel Twain Supacheco. I want to say that with, I think that you can look at a rent control ordinance, and there are a number of ways that you can set it up. I lived in a rent control department for 19 years and spent a lot of time thinking about this. It can also be set up, from what I understand, although maybe this is no longer true, to cover larger properties as opposed to, this, this may have changed, but from what I understand, in San Francisco, it had to be at least four units. So I'm wondering if there's a way to tinker it so that it actually only affects very large units, so that people who are, you know, owners of a single extra property or duplex or in-law unit are okay. And we still provide some people with a certain amount of protection from rent increases. I want to point out that rent control is not affordable housing. You have to be able to afford market rate housing to get in in the first place. But it does provide some relief to people who, right now, are telling me that their rents are going up astronomically. And in fact, the, some of the real estate agencies are saying this is a positive and happy time, because there's not a lot of new units coming on the market, and therefore rents in multifamily dwellings are going up, up, up. So the market isn't working. For some people here in Fairfax, I think something like more than half of renters in Fairfax are paying more than 30% of their incomes towards their rental costs, which is considered unaffordable and is impacting their ability to save for retirement, education, their children's education, et cetera. So I just think that if it is something that is considered, there should be some careful looking at the ways that it might be applied and that we kind of keep an open mind about it, but also protect some of our homeowners and small property owners in the community and find a balance there. It's something that a lot of us are very interested in as part of a parcel of things to look at, keeping affordability in town. I don't think it can be the only thing. I think we probably do need some new units for people who can't afford the market rate apartments that would be protected by rent control. But I think it's an interesting move that we are looking at it. And I'm really looking forward to hearing more about it and how it can be done in a, a good way, if it can be done at all. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want a quick word on this? Sir?
Thanks for listening. It's very interesting watching you guys. I wonder, you seem so calm, but I'm wondering what you're doing with your feet, you know, if you're kicking and stuff. So anyway, I've been John Fitzpatrick. I have a shop here on Sir Vance Street Boulevard, and I've lived in Fairfax for many years on Hickory Road. And I've been renting here for over 45 years. And, and most of my renters, a lot of them work from the city and/or the county. And as soon as I heard rent control, it just, it really scares me, because I've kept my rent so low that it's going to be like a trap. So now I have to think, man, I better start raising my rents right now, because if I get in this trap of rent control, I will be, I will either sell my properties and then the renters are going to be leaving, or something's got to happen, because I can't leave right now. I feel like I'm helping. I don't want to sound like a saint or nothing, but, you know, I don't, I keep the rents as low as we can. But if, I don't want to decide that. I don't want a politician or a bureaucrat deciding how much money I should charge somebody. So my thought right away is, if you have low rent right now, and you're a landlord, and you hear rent control, you better raise your rents, because if you don't, you're going to get trapped. So it's, it's like the great leap backwards, if you go with rent control. I think it's going to be a real problem for a lot of low renters right now that are getting pretty good rent. So good luck.
Thank you, sir.
I agree with that gentleman, because when I heard...
Could you tell, tell us your name, address, if you wish?
Joan Bergerella on Scenic Road.
Okay.
For 40 years. I agree with that gentleman, because I have kept our... I agree with that gentleman, because I have kept our rent very low, because it's a friend. But the minute I heard about rent control, I said I'm going to raise it $1,000, just to sort of make it somewhat reasonable, because it's very low for her. I don't want to do that, I mean, I don't want to do it at all. I have a daughter that's a teacher, that has to find an apartment, and she works in the county here. So, you know, I understand what it's like, that's why I've been keeping it low. But what I want to do is ask you, before the next meeting, to speak to the landlords in San Francisco. I can set you up with friends of mine, who own property in San Francisco. All you talk about is affordable housing, you don't talk about the landlords, and what they have to go through. And I have been, my ear has been chewed off by quite a few friends, that cannot make it because of the rent control for their property in the city. Also, I have a number of friends that own property in Fairfax here. They also rent apartments in San Francisco, actually, a two-bedroom apartment and a one-bedroom apartment, for one married couple, because it's so cheap. It's rent control. Now, how does that work out? Because they're taking apartments away from people who need it, even though they have two apartments for one couple, three bedrooms. That's not fair, but that's the way it's working in San Francisco. And so you have to look at the other side of it. If you're going to affordable housing, you have to go to the other side, and talk to the landlords. It's not fair, what's going on in the city.
I appreciate your thoughts. Ma'am, we, let's, a very quick word, very quick, because you've had the opportunity-
Okay, very quick. Margaret Honey, again. Okay, rent control and affordable housing, two separate issues. Rent control is built-in expensive housing. What's happening in San Francisco? When they have, when there is available, when a unit comes up, they ask exorbitant fees, because they know that if the person does not leave, they're not going to be able to raise it. Okay? That's one thing. It's built-in age discrimination, because landlords want younger people, 30s and so on, who know, they know they're going to move out, move on, and then they'll be able to raise. So they are, I went through this, I tried to rent in San Francisco, and it was impossible, even though I have very good credit, and all of that. You know why? Because they, when you are 50 and so, close to retirement age, they know that you might not want to leave, and then they are not going to be able to raise the rent. Oh, you know, there's an index, but it's not, okay. So, they don't want older people. They take younger people, so that they will leave in about a year or two, and then they can, they can re-rent that place at the market value. So that's a built-in. And another thing, dilapidation, because landlords do not have the funds to keep the properties. That's all I'm going to say tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts or comments on this? Ma'am?
I am not a Fairfax resident, I'm a San Rafael resident, but I came here tonight because I did hear, I am a landlord, and I did hear that there was going to be a discussion about rent control, which I think is one of the first, that I've heard of in the county. And then it scares me to hear that the whole county is actually contemplating this, because, I'll say a couple of things. I agree with all of the previous comments, that it is so important that you look at this from both sides. That is, I mean, I just cannot overstate that. I have a tenant now, that for the, I've rented for 16 years, and, you know, I myself just squeaked by to be able to buy the home I'm living in, and then to rent my unit that I now rent, but I worked really hard to be able to set myself up financially, to be able to, and I'm still, I've been, you know, hanging on by my fingernails all these years, to be able to try to make this plan work. And the tenant that I now rent to had previously lived in San Francisco, and of all of the tenants that I've rented to in all of these years, she is the most difficult, she is familiar with the rent control situation, she thinks that if I raise her rent, even though, like many of the others here, I keep it in the lower range of what is in my local vicinity for, you know, the demographic, she then yells that it's discriminatory, I mean, she, she, the pendulum has swung 180 degrees so far, when people are in that situation, that it, I have a lot of sympathy for renters, but I try to keep my rents very reasonable, but when they think that they can treat you like you're their servant, you're their slave, you don't have any rights, they have all the rights, tenant rights are getting stronger and stronger and stronger. And then to impose rent control on top of that, as a landlord, many people who rent out their properties are on fixed incomes, or close to retirement, or in retirement, and that is part of their income. We have been going through the economic downturn ourselves. The rent that I now get is my income, because I was let go at the beginning of the recession, and I have not been able to return to a full-time job. I have found part-time work, intermittent, seasonal work, and that kind of thing, and that rent income to me has been my lifeline, as well as now having to take out of my IRA. But if I don't have that, or if I have imposed, you know, ceilings that are imposed and governed, that I'm not able to have some ability to change, that's what leases are for. People rent to tenants with a lease in, you know, for a period of time, to allow the tenants to know that rent will not change for this period of time. So I'm just trying to emphasize to you that it's a very, it's an economical argument for landlords, it's not just the tenants' side of economics. And one last thing, someone commented on the fact that tenants now may spend up to 30% of their income on, that is not just tenants. Mortgages are the same situation. People who own homes have to spend, you know, a great deal of their income on just paying that mortgage. So it, I'm really getting upset with this one-sided argument that I hear, all about the tenants. I understand that, I've been one. But we all have to understand what we might be able to do to plan for our future, and if we don't like renting, because we are perhaps going to have to incur increases from time to time, just like when we go to the grocery store, or just like when we go to buy gas, all those increases are put upon us. So I just want to reemphasize that it's, you cannot just continue to, you know, beating the drum for affordable housing and all that is very important, but you cannot, you know, ignore all of these other stories that you will hear about rent control, whether it's Berkeley, or any of these places, and you must look at that with your eyes wide open, and be fair to that side of the situation as well, and that's all I can say. Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you so much, and thank you for coming down. Last speaker on this?
Good evening, my name is Roland Lee, I've been dealing with rent control for 40 years. I come from personal experience with property in San Francisco, property in Marin. When you, if you, I came to talk about the rent control, two different issues, affordable housing, rent control. If you bring rent control into Marin County, you will open up a whole can of worms, and you'll be sorry you did, because it, there's many, many aspects about rent control. You devalue your property, because when you rent to somebody, you've got a lifelong tenant, they're not going to move out, they're not going to move out. That's a protected class. You are discriminating against the owners. The owners, it's, renting, renting is just like any other business. If you don't stay in business to lose money, people will sell it. I have friends, very close friends, that have a six-unit building in Union in Stockton, and they've had this building for 50 years. They've got a protected, they're all protected classes, they've been there 20, 30 years. When the mother dies, they'll sell the building, they can't get what the building's worth. You get whoever's in the building, you're stuck with it. How will you pay for the rent board? You have to really know the ins and outs of rent control. You read the San Francisco Rent Board Bulletin, it's 200 pages, you have to be an attorney to understand it. Very difficult, very, very troubling problem, and it will be, it will continue to haunt everybody. But you devalue your property. It's based, property is based on what it generates, your income. If it generates no income, your property's not worth any, it's not going to be worth anything. So you have to be very careful. I've had, I've got dozens and dozens of stories of rent control, because I have to deal with the tenants. You get them, you have them for a long time. I'm not in favor of rent control. Would you do about low-rant housing and affordable housing, something else. I have many stories I could bring up, if there's going to be continuing sessions, I'll talk about it.
Okay, there.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, I think enough conversation, if I was just to wrap it up, no, 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 you spoke already, so let's wrap this up. What, those of you who have spoken, those who are paying attention to this, what I might suggest is, I think Barbara and Larry are convening a meeting in late September. I'm imagining that Larry's going to bring this back, and at that time, we'll also have the advantage of having the town manager brief us on county efforts in this matter, and so we'll be able to have that fuller discussion. So, for those of you who are interested in this topic, please check the agenda, I strongly suspect that the first Wednesday in October, we will put that on the agenda, and it will be close to the top of the agenda, because we're removing it from, oddly enough, full conversation this evening. So thank you all, let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back with number 12. Okay, we'll get to it soon. Let's start with number 12.
Mayor, could I just have one minute on rent control? I mean, I know the room is cleared, but there may be some people watching, and-
Pick your mic up.
Just to address a couple of the issues that were raised by the speakers, there is a memo attached to our packet, which explains some of the limitations on rent control for folks. First of all, single-family homes are exempt from rent control under state law. Any kind of rent control that we would do, we can control how it is implemented, if it's implemented, and I just don't want the viewing audience, or future people that are watching this, to think that we would be trying to implement some sort of rent control ordinance that would not work in Fairfax, that would unduly burden our small landlords. So, I just want to address that, I want to put that to rest, that the memo was actually added to the agenda after we heard testimony from a few tenants of the larger multi-unit complexes come in and complain about serial increases in rent. So I just kind of want to tone down the level of concern as much as I can, and we'll see what we can do as we go through this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's pick up 12. Garrett designating council members to author ballot arguments and rebuttals. Anything you want to say on that, before we have conversation?
Well, maybe for the audience at home, it's regarding, the council on July 16th decided to put on the November ballot, the renewal of Measure I. Measure I, as most people know, is to fund fire, police services, youth programs, funds for grants, public works-type projects, and what the council decided for the extension, it'd be for five years, it would renew each year during the five-year period, and the tax amount would actually be $195, which includes the $125 base rate, which everyone pays now, the $50 general municipal tax, which is actually eliminated, eliminated, and actually incorporated into the special municipal tax, and a $20 increase that really represents kind of a cost of living increase, since it's exception two years, 10 years ago. We added senior programs to eligible uses, and we are keeping the oversight committee, and the only thing was, that was approved on the 16th, and really, but we didn't designate, the council didn't designate who to be on the different ballots. One thing I want to point out is, last year, you actually had one line item said, "Town Council, by and listed your names," that just counted as one signature, and then you had four other signatures.
Any questions of Garrett on this? If not, I'm gathering the issue here is to designate some folks to work on ballot stuff. Do we have any volunteers? Larry and Barbara, excellent. Any comment from the public on this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
So, David, can I just ask, in terms of, just for process, when we move forward, these guys are doing the language, in terms of creating a committee going forward, do we have a, do we have a structure for that? Do we have a way that we're going to outreach to the community, to get people involved, so that we can get the information out?
Yeah, you can't, that's not really a-
Because it's not the item I-
Item of discussion, and more importantly, if you're talking about campaigning, that's a whole separate entity, that's separate from the government.
Right.
Okay, so it is, all right, well, we can, I, thank you.
Okay, so we have two members who have been self-designated, the public's had the opportunity to speak, if Garrett has nothing more to-
And is it going to be the council members want that one line that says, "Town Council," and your five names, and you get four other signatures? I'm assuming that's still valid.
I, I think we can, you know, we can address that, but it, does everybody want their name on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll-
Do you know what the deadline is, to get the argument in?
Yes, it's the 18th for the argument, and then 25th for rebuttals, if there are any arguments against it.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we have the two self-selected council members, Coler Bragman, and all in favor of approving their designation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, you're it. Thank you for volunteering. Number 13. This is an introduction of first reading of an ordinance of the Town of Fairfax regarding collection, recycling, and disposal of waste generated from construction, demolition, and renovation projects. Garrett, short introduction.
Sure, this may seem like it's a recycled item, because you approved this back in September 2013, created diversion as mandatory. Inadvertently, when we adopted, council adopted a new building code in December, this ordinance actually was deleted. So avoid that happening again, we put it in a different section, but unfortunately, that means that you need to re-adopt it, so it can take effect and be back, be back as requirement. Just one item is note, what we've done is, in the interim, since it didn't exist, we just asked for voluntary compliance, and it hasn't been a problem with anyone, mainly because it gets recycled anyway, when they take it to the Marin Resource Recovery Center. So with that, we're recommending that you introduce the first reading. It would take effect 30 days from the second reading, which would be 30 days from September. And just to point out, we found a couple of typos in this one, on page four of the ordinance, there's a word there that says "shall be based," and there's an "in," it says "shall be in-based," we took out the "in," it should be "shall be based," and that's the top of page four. And the second typo is actually under A9, which is under 18.14040 on page four, and it's A9, and it's supposed to say "not," right now it says "we're," excuse me, the other way around, it says "we're not structural," it's supposed to say "we're no structural." So, it's on page, it has page number four, it's section 18.149, so, okay, so those are two typos.
Other questions of staff?
One question, on page two, paragraph I, at the top. I need a little clarification on this. So the town finds that, "To ensure compliance with this chapter, and to ensure that those contractors that comply with the chapter are not placed at a competitive disadvantage, it is necessary to impose a financial incentive set forth by resolution of the Town Council." I, I'm, I just need clarification as to what this financial incentive is.
Is the way of wording, there's a penalty if you don't comply?
Oh.
That's a 3% fee, right? Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Other questions of staff on this? Seeing none, it's time to go out for public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Does somebody want to make a motion on this?
I will make a motion to introduce the first reading of ordinance number 783, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending Title VIII, Health and Safety of the Town Code to Add 8.14, Collection, Recycling, and Disposal of Waste Generated from Construction, Demolition, and Renovation Projects, Sequoie Exempt Per 14, C.C.R., 15061, B3, and 15308.
And we're waiving first reading, by title only, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have Renee and Coler, all in favor? Okay, we have Renee and Coler, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, unanimous. Number 14, this is another introduction and first reading by title only, and waiving of first reading. Garrett, you want to take this?
Sure. Again, council may recall on July 16th, you directed staff to prepare this ordinance, which in essence creates a mandatory charge for the use of paper bags. And what you did at that time, you imposed a 10 cents mandatory charge for paper bags and recycled bags, with the ability for council to increase the change by resolution on an annual basis. You exempted customers participating in the state supplemental food program, and you only applied it to grocery stores and retailers greater than 5,000 square feet, inclusive any outdoor sales space. Again, the whole reason for putting this in was because of the potential of the state SB 270 passing, in which case it would preclude your ability to create your own ordinance covering this. So with that, it's introduction of the first ordinance, that concludes staff report.
Any questions of Garrett?
Just one quick one, on line 102C, where it says the town council may increase the 10-cent minimum charge by resolution. I think in the staff report, we talked about on an annual basis or less frequently. Do we want to add on an annual basis or less frequently so that nobody thinks we'll be doing it every month?
Well, that council likes.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Excellent. Any other questions of Garrett on this? If not, we'll go to public comments. Cindy, you had a thought on the matter?
Cindy Swift, Fairfax. SB 270 aside, I'm philosophically opposed to mandating charges like this to change behavior because I don't think it works. I understand, as Mr. Toy said, the town is working this ordinance now so that it can be free to increase the charges going forward in relation to SB 270. The staff report didn't say which businesses were affected by the ordinance, so I asked Mr. Toy. He said the only business in town right now that's affected is the daily method and exercise facility.
Sorry, you're referring to the formula base, the moratorium.
No, I was referring to this item.
Oh, okay. I interpreted your question as applied to the moratorium. So in this, it's the grocery stores, two grocery stores, and the lumberyard.
Okay. So in your, so it does apply to the two grocery stores in town that we have now, okay? And possibly Fairfax Lumber?
And Fairfax Lumber.
And Fairfax Lumber, come under the ordinance, okay? So that clarifies that for me. The ordinance stated purpose is to reduce single-use paper bags, as far as I can understand. So I don't understand why we're requiring stores to charge for reusable bags as they're defined in the ordinance, which were bags with handles and made of cloth or other machine washable...
No. Garrett, can you please clarify exactly what's going, what kind of bag will be assessed the 10-cent fee?
Actually, it is, it is paper bags or reusable bags because they're considered checkout bags, and it's somewhat of a model ordinance because it's creating the incentive that people bring in their own bags. But that's how it's written right now.
I mean, that seems to defeat the purpose that you're going to charge for those, and stores can't give those out.
Which, which, where are you looking, so we can all look at it together?
It's line 66.
Hey Garrett, hold on a minute.
No stores shall provide a paper bag or a reusable bag to a customer at point of sale unless the customer is charged.
Or a reusable bag.
Yeah, we can take that out. I think it was to avoid in the unlikely situation that a retailer might just decide to start giving out reusable bags that become disposable bags, but I agree, we should take it out.
But if it's a reusable bag as defined in the ordinance, from my perspective, they should be able to give those out.
Yes, I, that's true. So we should, I would recommend taking it out. Thank you for finding out.
So take out the reference at the top of, whatever the heck it is, line 66.
Line 66.
And also wipe out 59 and 60.
And then assuming, as Mr. Toy has mentioned, that grocery stores came under the ordinance, I know that ordinance speaks to individuals that are food subsidy participants, and that they're not charged a fee for a bag, correct? So if you're somebody, a WIC participant, there's no charge to them.
Correct.
But when you look at that, you've got stores in town that actually give you a 5-cent credit if you don't use...
Okay.
...a bag. So you're actually charging those individuals...
Cindy, I want to thank you. You've raised a number of issues. You're going to take this back, Garrett, and clean it up because I'm seeing the words reusable bag sprinkled throughout here. So let prologue be guidance to us tonight, and take it back and clean it up.
Okay. Okay, I just learned SB 270 had some more changes, so yes, we can come back with the changes. Take out reusable bag, got it.
Okay. Give us...
I think that reusable bag, in the context of defining it as or what it is, is a good idea, but taking it out, because I think David talked about 59 and 60...
We'll make clear that there's no charge for reusable bag. I guess if I have that direction, we can...
Okay, so a reusable bag is something that you bring to the store. If the store decides they want to give those away free, I think it's defined in here that they could do that for a period, a certain period as a promotion. But if, if the store wants to start charging a dollar for a reusable bag, we don't want to preclude that if it's something made of fabric or something like that, which most stores have. So we want to be careful what we're doing. I think Cindy's pointed out some really good changes, but we don't want line 66 to include or a reusable bag.
Right. And I, and honestly, I think that's the only change that's really needed here, is to take out the word reusable bag on line 66. I think you leave in the definition...
Except you'll see, I just glanced at another page and saw the word recyclable bag.
Right. We leave the definition in, reusable bag, and then it has it, it has other things, like on line 76, store may provide reusable bags...
I get it. Garrett, just take it back and clean it up.
Okay.
No, you have to speak up to the mic.
My only other comment was on people that are participating in the food subsidy programs like WIC, where now they could go to a market in town and get a 5-cent credit for not using a bag. What this does is actually takes away that 5-cent credit from them because they now don't have to pay for the bag, but they don't seem to get the 5-cent credit, potentially.
I think anyone that brings their own bag gets that 5-cent credit.
Maybe you could point out where you're seeing that, Cindy?
Well, just as it talks about the food participants, the food subsidy participants don't pay.
Could you maybe say where you are? Oh, under number two, where it says all stores must provide at the point of sale free of charge either to these people. It doesn't then say that they can't get the 5 cents. It's just saying that they can get these for free.
Right. And I was just thinking, the potential there is that the 5-cent credits would go away for those individuals.
I think regardless, if someone has a WIC card or is using food stamps, they bring their own bag, they get the 5-cent credit, so regardless.
Okay, well, let's just take a look at that section, just to make sure that there's no problem there.
I don't think it precludes it, but it, it's usually the business voluntarily.
Can we just look at it? Let's just make sure we look at it.
Sure. Well, I think I got it. I, I think I got what you want.
Okay, if this thing turns into a gonzo McGillo, maybe we want to take a look at whether the state law might actually be the, a nice default here. All right, moving on to number 15. Barbara, I believe this is yours.
I guess just to finish up. September, cleaned up with no errors? Yes. Perfect.
15.
Okay. So Garrett can do the town manager report on this, if you don't mind.
Sure. Council member, council member Coler indicated that under this current sign ordinance, it prevents political signs more than 30 days prior to election. What we discovered, what she pointed out was that due to how voting happens nowadays, that really, that's probably not a good idea. It should be a little, 60 days or so, or something like that, just because of the way people do ballots. What we found, and from the town attorney, is that you really can't put a prohibition on political signs per se, but you can do non-commercial signs, which things like advertising for tryouts or something like that for Little League. And so what we need is just direction of what you'd like us to do. We can actually come back with a non-commercial signs ordinance to modify the existing ordinance that would allow campaign signs or whatever to be put up 60 days prior, but it would also apply to a bunch of other signs.
Got it. Will you be able to bring something back and have us put it in place at the September meeting? Because if we're thinking of 60 days, that's 60 days, not 30 days thereafter.
Sure. We can do that. We just needed some direction if that's what you want us to do.
You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
To do it as urgency to put it in effect right away? We would.
I mean, the reality is, it's unenforceable, so if someone wanted to put up a sign, we wouldn't make them take it down.
Yeah, but, okay, so having, went through this process myself, and our town clerk, who's so very good at reading the code and reminding us of what we should do, and we even have a sheet that tells you, you must take signs down within a certain amount of days, and they cannot be up more than 30 days. It seems like as far as us trying to move forward with this latest measure, we're not going to be timely for that. But I do think we should come back with this and we should fix this because we're out of date. We now found we also have a problem. And we also don't want to encourage people who have campaign signs to think that they can leave them up for a year. So I think it makes sense for us to fix this, but it's not going to be able to help us out for this latest measure, but that's okay.
Wait, wait, wait. Why will it not be able to help us out?
Because it has to be urgency. It's an ordinance.
Well, the reality is, you adopt, you introduce it in September, second reading in October, takes effect in November, although the current ordinance does govern when you have to take signs down.
Okay. Are you basically saying, though, under here, that the current ordinance is not in effect, null and void? No?
No, we're just saying, when it comes to political signs, perhaps it's, that portion's unenforceable.
That's what I'm saying. So in other words, a campaign is being held this fall, despite the fact that we have a current ordinance in place, are you saying, well, that ordinance isn't going to pass scrutiny?
It would not pass scrutiny, judicial scrutiny, inasmuch as it singles out a certain type of speech, political speech. And there is, the way you get at political speech is through non-commercial speech. So divide all speech into two categories, non-commercial and commercial. Political speech falls in the non-commercial category. So when you're attempting to regulate political signs, you're regulating all non-commercial speech signage for that. Temporary signage is another way of getting at it, but it's temporary non-commercial signs. So these types of ordinances just...
Okay.
...automatically get Little League signups and things that are temporary in nature for a certain period of time.
Are you saying that a political sign could go up on September 15th?
Well, what I'm saying is that if you attempted to enforce your current restrictions, you would find such a move to be ill-advised.
I would say, since I brought this up, it would have been nice had we taken this up sooner, but we've had other things to do that are much higher priority. I don't feel that I want to be part of something that's violating a town code by putting up a sign too early, even though we've now found that it's really incorrect. So I think we'll just live with it, just like I lived with it during the campaign and you lived with it. It's, it's not going to be the fatal flaw. And so we can get past it, but let's fix it so in the future, we don't have this outdated, problematic thing. So is it possible to bring it back to us in September?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. So we've, we've provided staff with direction regarding revision to the sign ordinance, no reason to move forward with a, any vote on this that I can see. And I think that's the direction of council. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bragman, Coler, we're adjourned. Thank you.